Sure, Mayor Bachman. Here. Trustee Penutson. Trustee Valentine.
Here.
Trustee Stelter.
Here.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Trustee Markle.
All right, we have four, and we can continue next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion? Yes, I do want to be. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. All right, yeah, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, yes, Mr. Markle.
I request that pull the at-large park events Colorado team Food and Farm Alliance off the consent agenda.
And deal with the difference.
I'd like to. Yeah, we need a second first.
Yes, we do need a second.
I will second.
So we have. All right, so we have a motion to approve the agenda with the Colorado Food Farm Alliance part thing brought off. And don't. All right. Do you have another?
I had another, I'd like to ask if the mayor's report come up higher on the agenda. Okay, the. After the consent agenda perhaps? I mean, after the, yeah, consent agenda.
Okay.
Because I'd like to speak about the. Strategic planning session.
Oh, yes. All right.
I would like to make sure we get to it.
This is right. Okay, and that's fine, we can put the mayor. If there's a second. No second. All right. So, all in favor of approving the agenda with the changes of the Colorado Food Farm Alliance off the consent agenda and the mayor's report move about this first. Bye.
All right.
All right, close? All right, that motion passes. All right, next is announcements, I do have a couple of announcements. First, I would like to welcome everybody tonight. We are very pleased to have you in attendance. We do always welcome your comments, questions, and suggestions to address the board. Please raise your hand and wait to be called on by the mayor. Then come to the podium and state your name and the street on which you live. If you are on Zoom, please use the raise hand function to be recognized. If you are on the phone, use star nine to raise your hand and dark star six to mute none. All comments should be addressed to the mayor only and be no longer than three minutes. It will help the board to hear and understand your comments if they are clear, concise, and respectful. Please present factual information. Personal attacks of any kind are not in order. During the public comment period, you may speak on any subject. When speaking on agenda items, please keep your statements directly about the agenda item being discussed. Until you are called on by the mayor, please be respectful of those around you and those who have the floor by remaining silent. Any side conversations, please take them out. All right. Also, the Learning Council, I wanted to announce the Learning Council and the Forest Service did their annual park cleanup or town cleanup and went around town and collected 507.5 pounds of trash over a two-day period. The seventh graders at K A actually won with the most trash collected and they collected over 100 pounds of trash. So a little round of applause for our. There's also Dark Skies pending legislation now, which would in fact give grants to places that are trying to become Dark Skies certified and to help Dark Skies communities to come into compliance with the rules that they passed. So this is something to look for as it comes forward. The last thing is May 17th at 6:00 P M, the board has a DOLA training here. It may, it probably will run about two hours. All right, next is the appointment of trustee vacancy. So we have three candidates who have put forward their letters. I would invite each of them to come up and address the board if you would so desire, we'll do alphabetically. So, Mr. Brunner, you are first if you would like to address the board.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Brunner of Peonya, frequent listener to these meetings. Pretty much know who I am. Once in a while, I come in a little hot in the words of Sam Lightfoot from the training the other night, but like many of you, I can do good decorum too when working with the board of conscientious people that are trying to make it better. I think. Given Mr. Weber's application, I was tempted to step aside, but I don't want to do that to a friend. And frankly, I think this is very important. This is where democracy starts, this is democracy 101. And government is important, it's where we learn to live together without killing each other. Look at the world, it's really important, something we have to do. It requires some, some hard decisions. So, here I am. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Brunner, all right, Mr. Check.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy to serve on the board, do my best to cooperate and do it in a positive manner. Try to consider all the options that we have to consider. To the best of my ability, come to. A consensus with others and cooperate.
Thank you, Mr. Check. All right, Mr. Weber.
I'm David Weber. Lived on 338 Delta Avenue for 31 years. Delta Avenue is kind of interesting, it seems to produce more trustees, mayors in the area of the street. And we all get along. So, eight and a half of those 31 years, I was on the Peonya Town Council. And my primary reason for getting on was water. Water's still the issue now, water will be the issue future. Because we are semi-desert, maybe fading into desert. Water situation now, I mean, I spent about eight and a half years when I got on, by the time I left, the system was a lot better. Not necessarily because of me, but because of the teams that we built that worked on the problems that the town had. And. The problems now are much worse than when I left. A lot of that had to do with lack of oversight for Travis, who was running Public Works. I thought that maybe when the National Guard started handing out plastic water bottles, there'd be a wake-up call for people in town. And then we'd actually start to fix problems that were occurring, but everybody's kind of went back to sleep and everything continued to decay. And we're just now assessing, I mean, if you saw what the situation was at the sewer plant when you guys did the tour of it. And also the condition of the treat, water treatment plant with water on the floor, broken pipes, one of the skids down, dead mice in the corners. I mean, this is a serious issue. And you've all seen these important information about your drinking water. Oil orders. Maybe you don't want to give powdered water to your infant. Maybe you want to drink bottled water, you know, we have some of the best water in the plant. We really need to care for this water. Can't just let it go to pieces on us. So it'd be easy to blame someone for this, it'd be easy to blame Corinne for not doing proper oversight for Travis. Easy to blame Mary for not doing proper oversight for Travis. Easy to blame the previous council for not doing oversight for Travis. But the truth is, a whole succession of town managers failed to do oversight. A succession of mayors failed to do oversight, and a succession of trustees failed to do oversight. So this is a systemic problem, it's much bigger than one person. And you have to fix the system, we need to do the plumbing too. At the same time, we need to ask ourselves, why did it fall apart? And why did the three levels of oversight fall apart? And the space shuttle has five levels, there's five levels of computer in it. We have three levels and they all fail. So, I think we need to build a team. We need to do a damage assessment, we need to do a resource assessment. How much resources do we have that we can actually use to repair what we have? What kind of timeline will it take based on our income and our current resources, financial resources? And we need to build this team, I know I keep reiterating that, but that's the only way we got things accomplished when I was on before. Built a sewer plant, put in a lot of treatment plant, and you saw in my letter all the various issues we did. There's one other one on there, which is coming up for you guys, we also relined too many gallon tank. So, when I left, we had three and a half, we had 3 million gallons of storage. We'd taken half million gallons offline because it leaked so badly. And now we're down to 2 million gallons of storage. If we went through another drought like 2002, 2003, we came really close to having the water go dry in Peonya. Water levels in the tank would build up during the night, it'd fall during the day. And then the next day, they'd build up a little less and fall a little more. John Norris stayed on top of it, the trustees stayed on top of it, we got through 2002, 2003 drought. That was a 600-year drought. The drought that occurred 2018, which was what was people said caused the 2019 failure, was only a 200-year drought. So we may, if we go through another drought with our situation the way it is now, we go dry, the National Guard comes back. I really don't want it either. I was reluctant to get back on council, I've done my eight and a half years. And I was kind of hoping that the kids would step forward, you know, the generation younger than me. Because the future belongs to them, it doesn't belong to me. I mean, I'm working here in the present, but I have the skills to do this because I've already done it once before. The other thing I'd like to work at is meeting efficiency. I went back and looked at old minutes and meetings used to run around, the shortest one I saw was 45 minutes, and two hours was pretty typical. And meetings are taken longer, so I think we need to figure out how we can make a more efficient get things done. The other problem is closure, there's a lot of things that councils have tackled but never finished. Take short-term rentals, take accessory dwelling units, those just aren't getting done. So, and I'd really like to get things fixed, that's just my nature. So at this point, I mean, you can choose me, and I will definitely work really hard because that's my nature. So I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. All right, can we get a motion?
I move to point Walter Check.
Do we have a second?
Excuse me, point of order?
Yes.
This should be done by ballot.
No, we did that, no, no, what, if we did it via the lawyer. The lawyer said, we tried this on the last time, he said, no, that was not the way to do it.
Let me just add, so I got, looked at Robert's Rules of Order and some other information, and one of the things, the takeaway is never in order to vote yes or no for against a candidate when electing persons to office, the only way you can vote against a candidate is to vote for another person.
And that's what we're doing.
No, 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 I'm sorry, but we're not, you just put a name out there.
Yes.
I do not want to vote for against this person. I want to write down on a piece of paper who my choice is.
But it should be, it should be an open, this was brought up when we did this the last time, and the public disagreed. The public said this should be discussed and out in the open, there should not be a ballot that was.
It must be a ballot. You, we have three candidates. If you do a motion with one person's name, you have automatically knocked out other people. It's not the proper way to do it, I'm happy to do an open ballot, and, but to, to do the motion is absolutely inappropriate.
Here, here.
You have three candidates.
Here, here.
It's just, it's the democratic way.
Do we have our lawyer on?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson, would you please weigh in on this for us?
Good evening, everybody. I, I would say we have seen it in various towns in different ways. Absent some command in the code, I think it, it really, I think sticking with precedent and how this has happened in the past is, is a good way to proceed. So as not to confuse things, but I, I believe the way it is selected is really up to the board to reach a consensus. Or reach a majority, at least reach a majority opinion in a vote.
Yes, Mr. Peterson.
I do remember from previous elections, we haven't had much of a chance because all three candidates are hearing different statements.
Yeah.
But, you know, different levels of preparing a statement. But in the past, we have, A, as council members, been able to ask questions of the people, like, why did they want to be and such types of things. And also, I do remember us having a lot of trouble with the paper ballot.
Yes.
And.
Two members.
Yeah, and we, we individually, but we went to the clerk, Charlie, and then there were some issues about how we did the math. So, it's problematic either way. I'd like to move that we, well, we have a motion on the table, and I will draw on my second.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we have an opportunity.
Well, we need to have Mr. Valentine rescind his motion if we're going to go that direction.
So what exactly?
Okay, so we're talking about a process, and right now, we have a motion on the table that you, motion for Mr. Check. Pointed. So, he's taking his second away, so you can either rescind or we'll just have the motion die for lack of a second.
So I'll rescind my motion.
Yeah. Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion that we have an opportunity, question. To ask them questions before we decide.
Okay, do I have a second on that? Okay, that dies for lack of a second.
I have so many questions.
So, yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we determine this candidate through balloting. Open ballot on a piece of paper.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, all discussion from the board? Yes, Mr. Peterson.
I'm curious about the process, because I mean, part of the issue is the public wants to know how we vote. And you say open ballot, what's the difference between that?
Right.
So we ranked order?
No, that ranked order really messed things up last time.
My, I make a motion that we do a ballot, I choose the one person who I want to be the next trustee.
Okay.
But it is inappropriate for me to be voting against someone.
Right.
Which is what the original motion was.
No, it was to vote for, to gay or name, just to give.
Excuse me, but voting nay is voting against a person. So the point is, when we go to the ballot box, we choose who we want. And we only have one position and three people. To me, it's very simple. Give me a piece of paper, give everyone a piece of paper, I will write down my candidate. And Corinne can read them off with my name, this is not a secret, I just, it's not appropriate to do it through motion, in my opinion. So my motion is we do it through ballot.
Okay, instead of doing paper, why don't we just, oh, it's Mr.
Um, instead of adding another step, how about we just do a show of hands? You.
Yeah.
Say the name and go in there and it's a ballot, basically.
Yeah.
Again, I think by doing that, it's, you are again are putting pressure, you are saying no to someone. The easiest thing would be to do, everyone write who you want on a piece of paper, give it to Corinne. Because if we do a show of hands, there's pressure to raise your hand when maybe you don't agree. That's why the people do voting, you know, in Congress, they have a button they press. They all do it at the same time, so that you are doing it independently for the person you want, I don't, I'm, I'm sorry, but I think a rate, a show of hands, again, is a, is a bias. It, it has inherent bias.
All right.
All right, so we, yes.
What do we do in case of a tie?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well. Two and give paper, all right. Yeah, we have discussion. Any further discussion from the board? Anything from the public? Yes, Ms. Markle.
I would just like to plug Suzanne Watson, I'd like to point out, when you do balloting, you have a written tally too, for the record. And it's something that's, you can look, citizens can ask to look at it as well, so it's nice to have that written documentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson.
All right. All right, all in favor of doing a written ballot?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes.
Circle which trustee you are and then what your vote is. I have one for you, it's a tie. Oh, it can't be a tie.
No, it can't be a tie.
Unless somebody does. Do you want me to read out who voted what?
No.
Dave Penutson, Walter Check. Paige Smith, Dave Weber. Rick Stelter, Dave Weber. John Valentine, Walter Check. And Thomas Markle, Dave Weber.
Okay.
No. I got him.
If you can find it, I won't make a new one, oh, then I'll make a new one, for now.
All right. All right, next thing on the agenda, oh, well, no, we have to square the man in. It is about square the man in.
And I have it, right? I state your name.
Hi, David Weber.
Affirm that I will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States.
Affirm that I will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
And laws of the town of Peonya.
And the laws of the town of Peonya.
Thank you. And I will faithfully perform the duties.
I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of a member of the Board of Trustees.
The office of a member of the Board of Trustees.
The town of Peonya, to which I have been appointed.
The town of Peonya, to which I've been appointed, and I love.
All right.
One second, I'd like to make a motion placed on the agenda for the next regular meeting, the following. Rebuilding committees for oversight and efficiency.
All right, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by the board. Yes.
When I first came on the board, we had those committees, we abandoned those committees. And I think it's really important with the public to be aware of when committees are reading and they be properly posted, because that was one of the criticisms we had before. But I just wanted to bring that out, that that was a public concern when we had committees, and one of the reasons we abandoned.
This is just a motion to put something on the agenda, not to do a discussion at this time.
I'm sorry.
And when it does appear on the agenda, yeah, we need to consider your point.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to put a reinstatement of committees on the agenda for next. Yeah.
That's a go.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion to place on the agenda for the next regular meeting, the following rebuilding committees for oversight and efficiency. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, close? All right, that motion passes.
Okay, motion to place on the agenda, there's only one more.
Okay.
I'm going to torch you, thank you much. Place on the agenda for the next regular meeting, the following procedures for expelling a citizen from a public town meeting and having a police officer at a public town meeting.
Okay, is there a second on that one?
Second.
Discussion from the board? Yes.
This is to place it on the agenda, but I thought it was pretty well cleared up when we did our training last time, but this is something that we can no longer engage in.
I agree, I just want to formalize it, and it should just pass through with a quick gavel motion, but we do need to agree on it as a board.
Okay, so we have a motion, yes. Just, all right. We have a motion and a second to place on the agenda for the next regular meeting, the following procedures for expelling a citizen from a public town meeting and having a police officer at a public town.
Okay, point of order. That is a compound motion, and I just made it that way. If I ever, or any of us makes a motion that has two or more parts to it, and you like one part and you don't like the other, what you should do at that point is say, I make a motion to split the previous question, and then determine how you split it up. And that way, you don't, a long, complex motion may have composites that you want to do, that's just a point order.
Okay, and well taken. All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Are you done now?
I'm done, ma'am.
Okay. Now let's rebound to recognition of this reason, yes. Is there anyone who would like to re-avoid on a subject that's not on the agenda, yes, Ms. Bethune?
I'm Jordan, this is then, I live at 507 Box Elder, and I served you guys with a letter of complaint, legal letter of complaint two months ago. I have not heard anything about it, and maybe I was very ready to go to court, or what was your decision about this? About the complaint?
We have addressed this multiple times, Ms. Bethune, and.
I have not heard it.
We received a notification from our lawyer.
No, I didn't.
On this.
I have not. I have not seen that.
Well, then I will be happy to forward that email.
So will you please tell me, and right now?
He stands with the administrators.
Okay, so we won't go before. Okay, thanks very much.
All right, anyone else want to address the board?
Yes.
Want to, Ms. Watson?
Aaron Watson, 38620 Pittkin Road, and I'm also with Dark Skies Peonya. Just wanted to let the board know that the Dark Sky Promotion and Designation Bill has passed the House and Senate, and the governor's going to sign it on May 23rd in West Cliff. Hope him to attend, it should be really cool. But what this is bringing is, it's going to help places like Peonya become Dark Sky Town. So that, so whatever obstacles we're facing here, this is an opportunity to address those. There's funding and there's also technical help, like an employee that's going to come, a consultant that can help wherever we have obstacles. And so, if the ordinance is our biggest holdup, we can have help with that. If our lighting inventory is a holdup, we can also get help with that. So I just want to let you know that that's what we're doing, what we have in store. This is, I think, a great opportunity for Peonya, because we already have so much community investment in this. And now's the time, so these resources are being freed up. And Dark Skies Peonya is here and available to, to work with the board in any way to, to make this happen. So we're ready to, to, to do something here.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Watson, yes.
For those of you that don't know, Aaron, he's chair of our local chapter, but not only the local chapter, he's chair for the state of Colorado.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Yes.
Chris Kendall, Nuthy Creek Road. I have, as I was walking in tonight, there was a suburban that pulled into a parking space, backed down, did a U-turn, pulled into another parking space, backed out and left. And it really disappoints me, I'm not against having our police officer in here, but he should be out there watching that kind of stuff instead of in with us. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. DeLuca.
Amy DeLuca, German Creek Thrive. I'm here for two reasons, one, or multiple actually, but I wanted to thank the town for accommodating, the North Fork Valley Creative Coalition had a marketing workshop in the space this week through Colorado.com, and it was really effective, we had like 15 or 20 people attend. And it was about people who are related, have businesses related to the tourism industry, and how they can get free marketing through Colorado.com. And a lot of non. And a lot of nonprofits and lodging places and wineries showed up, and we had some great ideas on how we can collaborate. And so this is just kind of a little bookmark that you'll be hearing from us again in the future, and we hope to get the town's support. And then also, last year, last summer, I wrote a letter to the town trustees about public restrooms in the summer. So since this is all new faces here, again, relate to that, I'm the president of Creative Coalition, and I'm a downtown business owner. And there are no public restrooms for people when they come, especially on the weekend. And so our personal, if we have a bathroom to offer to a customer, then it gets taxed and overused, and it's a lot of impact on our businesses. But we really don't have anywhere to send anybody, and there's, weren't, last summer, there were no restaurants really then on Saturday, so it was a bigger problem. So I followed up with Mayor Bockrinn about that, and she said that there is a plan to bring porta-bodies to downtown. So a long-winded question is, when is that going to start happening, and where will they be located? Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Watson. Cindy, are you operating the clock tonight? Okay. Yes, Ms. Watson.
Just a humorous anecdote, you've heard something about cars backing up. I wanted to report to you that your SIRSA attorney, after he left the meeting up to you, he pulled out of his parking space and he did a backup U-turn into the opposing lane of traffic and drove out of town that way. So I'm kind of wondering why it's confusing for people. Because even the town's insurance attorney did the same thing. Okay, thank you.
He's insured though, Suzanne.
Frederick Zimmer, German Creek Drive. Since the traffic is on the docket here, as some of you know, I've spent a lot of time on Bright Avenue recently, I have several jobs here. And I've been observing the traffic, and it is a nightmare, to your points. People are doing wacky stuff. I swear to God, forty-five percent of the people cross the double yellow line apart. People fly through town way too fast. People with big trailers loaded with stuff, rambling through town. What occurs to me is that this summer, when there are a lot of people here that are not used to being here, and there's a lot more traffic, and I saw the other day, this, this lane, this person was backing out, this person's pulling into the parking spot next to them. This person can't see that person because they're in the opposite lane of traffic. It could get nasty, so I think that's definitely something we need to pay some attention to.
Thank you, Mr. Zipper. Anyone else? Yeah.
Alicia Avalos, Niagara Avenue. I would just like for the future, your Section Eight, the speaker should offer factual information and refrain from obscene language and personal attacks, and I hope you guys stick with that. At the April 28th meeting, there was a lot of misfactual information given and a lot of personal attacks. So I hope that you guys, in the future, really hold up to that. Thank you. Anyone else?
All right, let's, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We are looking to approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a second.
I should know the minutes? The twenty?
Oh, yes.
The meeting's not adjourned, it was canceled due to lack of quorum.
But I adjourned the meeting anyway.
We moved to keep it until ten, as noted. And then two trustees walked out.
And I adjourned.
I would like the record to reflect that the meeting was canceled due to quorum busting.
As noted. All right, yes.
I also have
Wait, we're, we're sorry, we're trying to get a second to a motion. Did we ever get a second to Mr.?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stelter. All right.
I have two comments on the same meeting minutes. And the first one is on page seventeen, where we have the summary of the ayes, nays. And I was mistakenly put in the nay column, when it should have been aye. And I also wanted to have the minutes reflect a little better what happened at the end of that meeting, and I just, I just wanted to go at it this way. Simply say the time that trustee Markle made the motion, which was at nine thirty, and that motion carried, and simply say that trustees Knutson and Valentine left the meeting in spite of the vote of the affirmative to extend to ten o'clock. Get it? Okay, that's, in my opinion, that would get at it.
Okay.
Anything else? And I have one more on the meeting minutes. Four, five, two. And for me, these are not substantive. I think they could be fixed.
Okay. If you send an email to the county administrator with those.
And then one last comment, and I'll just, and I will send it on the motion made for, oh, the an outline for the clock plan, I thought it'd be important to include, the direction was given to the administrator to schedule a tour of the one-man meal and plan for the AWC members, at a minimum. So, and I will send an email with that.
All right, anything else from the board? All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda with changes to minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next up is the Colorado Farm Food Alliance Large Park Special Event. Do we have anybody here from that organization? No, okay, so you had questions about that, right? Want to pull it off, so? Oh, I'm sorry, Thomas, yeah.
Yeah, I moved that we approved this event with the caveat that the insurance policy is renewed. Right now, it expires on the twenty-first, which is before the event.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that that's renewed.
All right, so maybe, is that a motion?
Yeah, I moved to approve this event, second ending of renewal of insurance.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion from the board?
I have another question. Yeah. I had a question on, they have, oh, hang on, let me get to the page twenty-seven. They, they have contingency plans in case of bad weather, which references the teen center or the, what's the school? On the north side of town?
Nexus.
Yeah, the one that's used for meetings. My question is, this looked like canned language, and I'm not sure either of those buildings would be available the night of their event. So I'm questioning if they do indeed have a inclement weather alternative.
Yes, Ms. Ferguson?
That, that would be the weather alternative that they provided, but those are private entities that would, they would have to schedule as a contingency. If they were holding it at either one of those locations, the town wouldn't have any involvement in the approval.
I'm, I'm sorry, the Ellen Hansen?
We don't run that, it's ran by a committee.
Okay.
Does all the reservations.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Anything else from the board? All right, we have a motion on the table to approve the Colorado Farm Food Alliance with making sure the benefits is renewed in time, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. All right, next is the mayor's report. And we had discussions about the strategic planning session on the mayor. Yes.
Well, and I kind of added it on from our emails, but I guess I would like, I would like to make a motion that the trustees discuss and approve the spending of town funds for this plan and the content of the agenda for the strategic plan.
Okay, the town funds, at this point in time, how much was the rental for the Blue Sage?
Nine hundred and forty dollars.
Okay, so renting the Blue Sage for the day is a hundred and forty dollars. Mr. LeVette from DOLA will be facilitating it at no charge. There will be a catered lunch at this time, it's dependent on how many people show up. If there are fifty people showing up, it'll be about a thousand dollars.
I didn't get a second to my motion, I don't believe.
Well, okay.
What was the?
The motion was to discuss the strategic plan and vote on it in the town script. But, you know.
When?
It's the twenty-fifth of June.
I'll second that.
Okay. And as for, you know, town spending on this, it's well within the administrator's ability to spend a thousand dollars to feed the board and the public. That is not, that does not require board approval.
I'm sorry, but I, a point of order, I do not agree, there has been no discussion about the strategic planning on June twenty-fifth, other than a date. One was being organized by yourself. After a December, motion was made by trustee Knutson for two half-day sessions to discuss the budget, which was converted into the strategic planning. I questioned it then, we have had no board discussion on the need or the content for a strategic planning session. And my other point is, the original idea for strategic planning session was before we had all this information about our water and sewer system being in a huge state of disrepair and needing to spend thousands of dollars we did not budget. Therefore, I feel like this, this demands more discussion by the trustees as to whether spending twelve hundred dollars is a good use of money when we don't know how much we spent on water. And I believe that the trustees need to vote on what is being called a town-sponsored event. I, I only heard about this because of a citizen getting an invitation and forwarding it to the trustees. I'm sorry, but I don't feel like that's team building.
Well, and as I said in my email, excuse me, please, no outbursts. As I said in my email to you, this has been discussed a multiple times during board meetings, with board participation. Yes, Mr. Knutson was the one that made the original motion. And we discussed it then, we discussed in January, we discussed it again after I was able to get Mr. LeVette. And I, I gave a sample agenda of what he told me, is that we're going to, he's going to bring DOLA information and do things on the demographics of the area, the economic outlooks of the area, all of that as well. And the next thing is to do a SWOT analysis with the citizens of the town to tell us where they think we should be going with our efforts. And then, from that, we would take that information from the townspeople and businesses. And then, when we do our retreat, part of our retreat would be to come up with our own goals and strategic plan from what the town has said to. I think moving forward without any kind of town input is not doing a service to our constituency.
Was, has this been approved by the board or not?
There was a motion made that we do this, and that was back in December.
December, but not by this current board, is that correct? And it's going to fall under the purview of this current board?
Correct. And that's one of the reasons it got put off, and that's after Mr., we had it scheduled for, I think it was January seventh, Mr. LeVette had to go to the eastern slope to deal with the vulgar fires. And so he was not available to do it at that time. And by the time he was able to come back and fit it into a schedule, it was close enough to the new board that it was basically said, well, let's do this after the new board gets together.
Can we do this without spending town money?
We can. This room is not big enough to accommodate fifty people at tables and comfortably to do this, so we need a space that's bigger. A hundred and forty dollars for the Blue Sage is really pretty cheap. Now, if you don't want to provide food for people who are coming at their own time and expense to spend to give us input, I mean, that's fine. But it seems to me it's the least we can do to provide our citizens is to say, yeah, we're going to give you a little buffet lunch while we discuss this for six hours.
I don't know, I'm on the Friends of the Library board, and we just do potluck.
Well, if you want to bring enough food
I can cook a pie, I can cook a real bar of pie, two people here can testify with that.
If you want to bring enough food for fifty people, that's fine. Any other comments from the board? Yes, Mr. Kate?
Well, I think the point's really well taken about this board, it's not really sat down. This current board, as it's now composed, has not sat down. And I think it's really important that when the board engages in a move forward, that we're all on board with the commitment of designing it, talking about, and so I think that's what the motion really is getting at, is to say, us as a board, let's really figure this out. Because we've heard from trustee Thompson when he was on the board, that planning, planning, planning has really been our problem. And the issue about clear objectives and ideas about where we're going for the year, which I, as a board member, is, I hear a lot from you about that. And so the idea of us discussing, and I don't see that there's a problem, of putting it on the agenda, discussing it, and us as a board coming to consensus about how we want to.
Okay, anything else from the board? Yes, Mr. Mark.
It sounds to me like this task might be better given to the planning committee to begin with. I'm sorry, the planning commission? The planning commission, I'm sorry, yeah. Seems like what, what's being attempted is to reinstate the listening sessions that we kind of gave up on as COVID came through. Is that a straight ahead?
No, that is not really what is, no. It's much broader than the singles, single.
It, it, it sounds like a kind of a master plan approach, like long-term planning type conversation, which my understanding is a purview of the planning commission. And should involve, of course, the community on a regular and more elaborate basis. I think having a single meeting for twelve, twelve hundred dollars is not necessarily in the best interest of the community. I think having an open dialogue, more communication, it's more regular and more directed, might be more productive.
Okay, anything else from the board?
Yes, I'll only speak if, I would be speaking a second time, so I'm not going to speak until I'm sure everyone else has.
No?
Um, so at this point in time, I feel like we, we have so much we need to accomplish with the water system that we have not gotten, that we haven't prioritized, we don't know how much money needs to be spent, we have so much we do not know, that I frankly think spending six hours to hear the demographics of the town is, is not germane to where we are right now. I would be much more amenable to asking people to sit down and listen to what we're going to do to deal with water, sewer, infrastructure, so that we can move on, and then talk about bigger things like ADUs, housing, how are we going to pay for parks? But I'm, for me, this strategic planning seems completely off topic, knowing what we know about the town of Peonya right now.
Okay, anything else from the board? Yeah, Mr. Stelter.
I'd like to disagree with that, only because without a plan for what we're going to do, we kind of, we're at a scattershot situation. And that's kind of where we're at, we don't know where we're going. And that's why we're not getting anywhere. We, we kind of run in circles. And I think a plan is the way to go. But I don't agree with spending a lot of money, especially for lunch. I'm, I'm a big boy, I can bring my own lunch. You know, I've been doing it for forty-five years, and I can pack a lunch. And I think everybody else can too, just for the it's a kind of a silly thing, but we don't have a lot of money, and that thousand bucks may not save us, but it's not going to help us if we spend it, and we don't have it.
So I'd like to make a motion that, go ahead and have the meeting.
We already have.
Have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, we have.
Sorry.
Would you like to repeat that motion so?
I believe the motion was, I, I make a motion that we discuss the strategic planning session right at this point, and I believe I said, and determine whether to have the meeting.
Okay, so it's like it's going
Yeah, I caught that as discussion, that's all.
Yeah. So we're already doing the discussion. So maybe we rescind the motion, and then we'll have Mr. Weber make a motion, how about that?
I will rescind the motion.
All right.
Make a motion that we have a meeting, but not for, for a thousand bucks.
All right, I'll circle that. All right, any further discussion from the board? All right, from the public, yes, Ms. Watson.
Suzanne Watson. I'm very uncomfortable with the terms that are being batted around, because at the last meeting, mayor said, we're going to have a strategic planning session, so we can talk about the next ten or twenty years. That's a comprehensive plan, that's not a strategic plan. A strategic plan is five years or less. It's the very near future. Um, I don't feel that I have a sense that the board even knows what it wants to talk about. So what I would like to see is the board, um, kind of discuss what the agenda is going to look like. So the mayor's not setting it for you because her idea of what the strategic plan could be very different from what your values and goals and important things are. So if you could have some agenda setting um, to kind of tailor the plan to what you would like to see before it starts, I think would be, um, a real time saver. Um, um, strategic plans, um, sometimes discuss approaches to the operation fiscal conditions, things that are really kind of nuts and bolts for what's happening on the ground right now. It's not like the goals of the community to the future generally. That's the comprehensive plan. So if you look at the budget, you look at the water system, you know, get a, um, I don't know if you want to pull each other and then put something together with an agenda for that. Um, I want to let you know, I've heard that there's been fifty um, invitations sent out in the community. I wasn't included. I'm on the zoning board of adjustment. We have severe problems in this town with our board being ignored for some of the very basic things that we were formed to do. Why, why are our boards and commissions being left out? You know, are there things that our boards and commissions should be listening to? Maybe we won't participate, but we should be on the ground with you guys too. So I would like to include it. And I'd also like a town email address. I think the whole, all the boards and commissions need to be taken seriously. And we need to have town email addresses too.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah.
Matt Patterson, um, I agree with trustee Smith. I think, uh, in ways there have been people have been asking for a budget meeting to see comprehensively where our water sewer, all that stands, and that's really important more than this to me. But I also agree if we're going to have this, you could have it at the teen center. They, that can, there can be hundreds of people there and there could be a potluck. I'm happy to organize a potluck, but I as well was not invited, so.
Thank you.
Let me know.
Anyone else? All right. Oh, yes.
I just like to correct some information that was given. Um, the money will not come out of the water or sewer fund for that meeting. It comes out of the general.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second to, uh, have the meeting, but not have lunch. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Okay. All right, we have one name and the rest are us. All right. So I will, now I can, I can contact Mr. Lebeck again and have him send draft pretend that we can look at it the next meeting or if you'd like me to do that.
Do you have me now? Chris from G P.
Oh, that's for our, uh, that's our retreat.
I'm confused.
You're confused. All right. All right, then I will contact Mr. Lebeck. All right. All right, next on the, then that is dispersments. Can I get a motion for dispersments, please?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve accounts payable in the amount of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty cents. The payment of Boris retirement scheduled for five twenty-six, which is this month, one thousand six hundred and eighty dollars even. Approval of Chase credit card expenses in the amount of three thousand two seventy-seven and eighty-seven cents. The transfer to Summit, which takes money from low interest places and puts it in higher interest places of a hundred thousand dollars. Transfer to payroll of twenty-two thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars and forty cents. Payment of payroll taxes of seven thousand six hundred five dollars and forty-three cents. Transfer from ops for a total of payroll amount of thirty thousand one fifty-six eighty-three and a direct deposit. For payroll, same amount.
Can I get a second and have motion?
A second.
All right. Questions from the board? Yeah.
Um, I have a question on page thirty-nine, which has the listing of the two CDs, and I've been meaning to ask this for a long time. What, um, what spending accounts are actually in the CDs? And what, and do those CDs have a, a time when they come due so that money has to be put somewhere else? Cindy, Ms. Jones?
The CDs are combined funds.
Uh, please describe what that means.
It means that it comes from all the funds. It's not, um, it's not single, it's not a single source like the, um, one of the investment accounts is for the, it's the bridge money and one holds the, um, requirements for the, one of the loans. Um, it's combined fund, so it comes from all funds across.
So it's not money that we actively need? Since they're in CDs and do, does it, do these CDs have a maturity date?
One year.
And so, and you.
I need one year.
And so that's where these are not monies that we need to spend.
And one of, one of them, however, is collateral for the line of credit.
Okay. Thank you.
And another?
Oh, more? I do, but.
Okay, no, go ahead.
I just have another, a couple of questions on page forty. Um, and it is, uh, let's see. I was, I'm kind of curious if we could find out which buildings or which facilities the D M E A bills are going, are being charged with. In this case, the two thousand one sixty-two, I was just curious what building that is for? Or if that's a combined, a bill for, for multiple buildings?
All of our, all of our, um, D M E A bills are combined. Um, in this instance, it is a park facility, the water treatment plants and the cell phone tower. We also have a bill that comes, that's for, um, all most of the rest of the parks and the shop. And then we, the only one that's a single source is the sewer.
Thank you. Anything else?
Um, I have one. I just, I'd just like to point out to trustee Smith that, um, each time we do the check signing, we look at the individual bills that come in and we see how Cindy's break up is. Whoever is going to be on the finance committee, we've seen that every time we write checks.
I, I have one more question on that page. And it, it's, uh, referring to the trench plates that we rented. I just was curious as to whether we should just buy trench plates? Since we're going to be doing a lot of.
Brussels.
Is it? And, and please explain that.
Um, I questioned this Corinne at the last meeting. And we can get steel at the, at the cost of about two hundred a ton. And these plates are probably a ton, ton and a half pieces. And it's more, the problem is sourcing it. If we have to buy it new, my suggestion is we go to Reckless Metals and one of them will turn up at some point and we can buy it. Um, if we just have a standing order there, that's the best way to go. And, um, I know steel from the mill right now is two hundred to three hundred dollars a ton. But the shipping cost will kill us.
Yeah.
And we got to source it locally. So that's why.
Good. So it's, we will have one since we're.
Eventually.
Brussels. Um, two more questions on page forty-four. And this is the, uh, easy bill? And I was cu- curious what the fulcrum app is.
Everybody's like.
And, and I was surprised to not see an itemized Amazon, uh, bill where we can see all the things were purchased from Amazon because that used to be provided.
Who wants to talk about the platform?
The fulcrum app is the app that was discussed when S S G came, that the town purchased that allows administration to see, um, when report, when samples are being pulled on water and wastewater, when, um, any inspections, site inspections, spring line inspections, P R Vs, anything like that. They upload the report data, photos that they take, information like that. It's also, uh, what they're using to track the ongoing matrix, the system issue matrix. And that is a yearly subscription.
So, um, when you finish?
I just was going to ask for the Amazon bill in the future.
Okay.
Um, thank you Cindy for putting, uh, in some detail. But one thing that's missing from, uh, your financial report is I don't know the balance in the water sewer trash fund. The enterprise fund balances.
Yeah, those were in the last report when we got our quarterly financials.
But they're not in this one.
No. So are you requesting that we put those in every month?
Um, there's a motion on the table. I'll wait till it's clear.
All right. Anything else from the board? Yes.
We no longer have an invoice account, Amazon, which is what that was, um, providing. Um, it became difficult. And so we ended that. And so now, um, anything that is bought from Amazon is done with the credit card instead of through an invoice.
Could it be possible for you to just list the kind of things that you got like, and you know, it would help is if we knew what line item, budget line item you use to pay for it. That would actually explain a lot. Because if it's office supplies, it'll come from that admin office supply budget line, which would give us all so much information if we had the budget line items with a lot of the spending. Just, okay.
I'll keep that.
All right. Anything else from the board? All right, seeing none, anything from the public? Yeah.
Christina Patterson, um, was it trench plates that were rented or trench boxes? Because I know that during, uh, I think it was last year, we bought a trench box for like ten thousand dollars. And I'm wondering if we're renting those still because I'm pretty sure we have that. Uh, trench box was ten thousand dollars. Uh, Bill Bear made sure that Travis bought a trench box. So that's somewhere.
Thank you.
And I'll look at dispersants and find that through the next question. Thanks.
Great. Anything else? Yes, Mr. Brier.
Um, the town's paying the electric bill for the cell tower. Is that the one I paid? No.
Yes.
And I'm just curious, does the town recoup that by renting space to the cell company?
Yes.
Okay, I, I didn't know. Would you please include an itemized, uh, tally of the credit card? That's something that's happened occasionally in the past. Uh, would you please do that again?
Thank you, Mr. Brier. Anyone else? Yeah. Christine Patterson, Bill Brand. Do we have an idea of the pot shop transaction, the total every month, every week? Do we know yet?
It's on the, but.
Where?
It's under, what is that? What's going with that line item? Oh, what's the line item that we get the five dollar fee from for pot shops?
It's the occupational tax.
Occupational tax, yeah.
That's our occupational fee.
Is that the only thing that's included in the occupational tax or is there other occupational tax?
That's it.
Yes, that's.
Could you also, well, Cindy, could you tell us which large budget, budget revenue item that comes under which one of the accounts?
It should be street.
It's street capital.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, we have a motion and a second to accept dispersments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion that the financial officer provide the council the following documents at each regular meeting. Current balance sheet showing bank and fund balances, income expense report fiscal year to date, twenty twenty-two budget fiscal year to date spreadsheet format.
The board?
Yeah, I, I would just like to say all of that is very needed and we will be having hopefully more discussion about the treasurer position when we get to that part of the agenda as well.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion from the board? Yes, Mr. Markle?
Uh, I'm moving to direct staff to inquire.
Wait, 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 wait. We have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we disposed of that.
No. All right. Anything else from the board?
Discussing.
Yeah. Um.
If I'm understanding the motion correctly, you're asking for every single meeting to have those reports.
Correct. Next.
And that's what financially it's, it's a little more feasible to do on a monthly basis than twice a month. That's my question.
Um, all that I am stating there is what's already entitled thirty-one as a requirement under law to provide on request by trustees. So it's nothing other than formalizing what the C R S title thirty-one requires. And, um, uh, it's good to come into a meeting with fresh financial data because things change. You're right. The monthly one may be more, um, exact, but I'd like the intermediate ones too, so I know where we'll stay in case there's been a sudden expenditure. Are you saying that the, um, bi-weekly one is, uh, doesn't change? Or would you say the financial data is?
I, I'm just thinking of staff time that it takes to produce that. And that it's a more efficient use of staff to say, hey, once a month, this is when you need to close it out and give us a report. And, um, you know, one of the things you're, you're, we're, we're always doing the dispersals thing and I can understand, I think the teardrop getting at is how can we improve these persons if we don't know where we're at?
Right.
Which is a reason for having it every single meeting. Um, I'm just trying to be conservative about staff time. Just last meeting, we go to quarterly and that stuff not even monthly. Isn't that correct?
The, uh, um, I'm on the, I'm the treasurer for the Friends of the Library. I provide these for every Friends of the Library meeting. Uh, these are standard canned reports found in your accounting program. It takes me less than ten minutes to produce all three of them for the and the same thing that happened here. It happened fast. All you have to do is click on recording, put it down.
Our system's a little more complicated.
Well, I can help with that.
Okay, anything else from the board? Okay, anything from the public? All right, we have a motion on the table that the financial officer provide the council with the following documents for each regular meeting. Current balance sheet showing bank and fund balances, income expense report fiscal year to date, twenty twenty-two budget fiscal year to date spreadsheet format. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, that motion passes. Pass that back now. All right. Did you have a motion, Thomas?
I did. Um, I'm moving to direct staff to inquire with double J about the possibility of reducing the interval service interval at the one million gallons treatment plant to quarter.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
All second.
Okay, discussion by the board?
It's just, uh, the thing that I mentioned at the, uh, previous meeting. That, uh, could save us seven hundred and change dollars a year.
And, um, typically on a job site where you have few people using it. It's done very rarely monthly or bi-monthly. Um, because it's set up for a number of hours, uh, at least on a forty hour week at per man. And there's no sense in, in cleaning it every, every week. Even though it's a little nicer, but you know, still very expensive.
All right. Anything else from the board? Okay, anything from the public? All right, we have a motion on the table to direct uh, what was the name of the company?
Double J.
Double J. The, uh, double J B directed to service the one million gallon porta potties for all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, yeah.
Um, I'm moving to be direct staff to produce and maintain organizational chart and associated job descriptions.
Okay, um, I, I think we need some clarification on what that.
Uh, I was looking at the payroll summary and I see a lot of new names on there. Uh, I don't know who these people are, what they do, or why we need them. Um, and I think it's important that the board be informed as to the structure of our organization. Uh, I didn't hear a second of the motion, so I'm kind of.
Right, right, right. Second, I wanted to make sure.
So, uh, basically, most organizations will have an organizational chart. So we have, say, positions that need to be filled. We can have descriptions as to what those positions do. And if we need to expand that chart or contract it or trade somebody out, everybody can know exactly why and who's doing what job. Because right now, um, I doubt anybody on this board could name all the people who work for town.
Okay, so you would like to name names on that organizational chart show?
Uh, yeah, the organizational chart would include names, titles, and job descriptions would be separate.
Okay. All right. So the motion is to have an organizational chart.
We need to direct staff to produce and maintain an organizational chart and associated job descriptions.
Okay, reduce and maintain organizational chart. Okay, reduce and maintain organizational chart. All right. Anything from the board?
It's a good idea.
Okay. Did we get a second? Yes, Paige did. All right, anything from the public? All right, seeing none, we have a motion to have staff produce and maintain an organizational chart with job descriptions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, let's move on to unfinished business. First up is JBS higher change order updates. We have James, I believe, on the line. We have a document that was provided to us. And I would uh, open this up for James, would you like to do, say anything about your document prior to board questions?
First, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I do not have any initial statement about it, but I am prepared to answer questions.
Okay, great. Board? Yes.
Uh, James, I have, uh, before I was on the board, uh, I made a court request to pre the daily log sheet from all of the party plants were kept. Um, these are from 2001. And 2012, I have a million gallon plant and two million gallon. Um, I understand there have been part of changes to the structure, infrastructure since then. Um, but this is quite a bit of data. Yeah. Basically daily logs for, for both plants. Uh, for uh, at least two years. And I think some of it goes back to 2000. Despite the age of the data, it would be useful to you to have this.
I, I'm not going to say it's not useful. Um, having, having all historical files. Any and all is preferred. I may have some of them, I may have all of them, but if there is a potential that there are files we don't yet have, of course, these would have them in our records.
Um, how to describe them? But would have been file folders of paper sheets that I scanned and digitized. Um, they're handwritten, so you won't be able to copy and paste them, unfortunately. But the board may be willing to approve data entry for these if they are important to you.
I, um, I think in the immediate assessment of the water infrastructure and, you know, next steps, um, you know, it's, it's not something I need urgent, urgently, but it sounds like a good idea to digitize them because ultimately, long-term planning is best done with data from many years, so if that data exists and just needs to be digitized, then yeah, absolutely. You have my support.
Can I get the board to email this to James?
Sure. Sure. Please include the town administrator in that email. Thank you. Okay, anything else from the board? Yes. Um, James, this is Paige Smith, and I was just curious that you, you need three months of data from the lower facility. Then you can continue your analysis of the tap moratorium. So my question is, what, what is going on with the one, 1 million? How is that going to possibly happen? And when?
That sounded like an operational question. I'm not sure if I'm the person to ask that question.
Well, it, it is an operational question. And the problem is you're waiting. If you're waiting for the 1 million gallon tank to be up and running, does it need to be operational in, in treating water? Or can water be run through the system and counted, for lack of a better word? Or does it have to be treated to meet three months?
Um, I think I understand the question a bit better. Part of the request was just having confidence, having some data that represented supply, which could be done without it being online. Um, the water meters that are recording spring water diverted to the lower facility. Again, um, my understanding are recently operational and there was just need to have that data being recorded by SCADA um, so that that data was logged continuously and daily. I have not spoken with operations in the last two weeks, so I don't know, you know, if that data is currently being collected. But to answer your question, yeah, the, the question is about supply. The recommendation about having the lower facility online and the value to the community, though, separate question still holds true whether that data is being collected or not, if that makes sense.
Um, thank, thank you. And then I suppose that's a question for Corinne and the folks doing the ORC. Because if you need three months of data to write your letter, is that all that's holding you up for your letter report? Or maybe I shouldn't just say letter report for your final analysis.
So there's a couple of things there. But I think, you know, just warrant a little clarification, you know, discussion if the board would like to have it. Um, this, this uh, idea that three months of data is somehow or another the, the end all be all of data collection. Um, I straightforwardly, we, we understand the town is eager for simple answers from us. Three months of data is not going to allow me, anyone to do that. But it's our attempt at and recognition that, you know, you'd like at least something, somewhere to start. And so three months is something for us to at least build off of. Um, but when it comes to the tap moratorium, I mean, we don't, we do not do strategic planning with three months worth of data. Right? But three months of data was thrown out there as possibility um, in the fall specifically because that um, was thought to be a period of the year where the springs are generating the least amount of water. And so if we were going to assess supply versus demand, especially the tail end of summer season, when demand is still high and supply is low, we could at least make an, you know, an attempt at addressing the tap moratorium. You know, as I think other, you know, our initial report and subsequent follow-ups to it, you know, have pointed out and it sounds like, sounds aware, there, um, you know, there are multiple priorities and it's just how to put one above the other. Um, I can't speak to how urgent the tap moratorium is. I, um, I can attempt at addressing it at the request of the town. Um, but at this point, you know, three months of data in the spring when the supply is the highest. And I'm not sure if demand's picked up yet, may not be enough. And that's, I know not the answer you want to hear, but may not be enough for us to say, oh, yeah, great, the town has enough water. Like I would, I don't, I don't want you to, there to be an expectation that I'm going to say that based on three months of data, or no. Um, so yeah, I, I've been to a previous board meeting where I spoke. And I think there was also this, this notion that somehow another three months of data was going to answer all questions. And I just wanted to try to, try to address that a little bit. And if I haven't, I apologize, but I was trying to.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question for James.
Mister?
Um, what's the status? This is Dave Weber, the guy on board. What's the status of the 1 million gallon tanks? Have been allowed to go empty, half-empty? Is the water stagnant in it?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Ms. Ferguson has the answer to that.
You don't? Uh, you did admit in a letter after you had done your first party report that you have been given false data about the production on the lower treatment system. Does you still stand by that, that you don't have good data and someone actually gave you fake data?
I don't know what the data was that was provided to me. It was, you know, I don't know the backstory. But what I understand is it's not reliable and it shouldn't be used for, you know, me to make an engineering, a professional judgment on, so. In terms of, you know, that position, that's still true, certainly.
And you do realize that three months' worth of data is actually meaningless, right? I mean, you said in here, you said you'd like to have three years, and that's actually much more meaningful. Would it be better for us to collect three years of the data and then bring you back and have you do a full analysis?
Um, I think the town will, and this isn't unique to the town of Peony. Whether or not the town of Peony had acute water system challenges or not, um, you know, there, there is a need to periodically you know, update your, someone mentioned earlier during the board meeting, strategic plan being a shorter time period, five years. Um, so for example, rate studies are, are not, it's not uncommon for a rate study to be redone every three to five years. So certainly, I think right now, um, the town may have near-term needs for selling additional taps to support some of the capital investment that lays ahead, lies ahead. Um, I don't know that for sure, but um, you know, that's not uncommon for a water system or a wastewater system. And so there's a balance that has to come into play. Um, the, you know, you might not lift the tap moratorium, but you might do it strategically. And just in our office, the conversation we've had about even what our tap moratorium would look like based on three months' data, certainly something bounced around. Um, because yeah, like I was just speaking to, you're right, three months, three months of data isn't useless. Three months of data um, can be valuable depending on what your, what questions you're trying to answer. Um, well, but uh, your point is well taken, certainly. I would like to have three years' worth of data to do at least if I were going to do a master planning effort, for example. Um, to lift a tap moratorium entirely, absolutely. Um, it would be better to have more than three months with the data. But if there is a need to raise capital, we can do that, help the town by doing that strategically. You know, less than three months, three years with the data could be valuable, if that makes sense.
One question. Do you have more questions?
No, I'm done.
Okay, yeah. I have a second question and it's, so I'm, I'm trying to split some difference here. So if, if the 1 million gallon tank may or may not be up for treatment, but if you could start getting data beginning in, let's say, October and get six months of data when it's probably got the least amount of water, would that suffice? Would that provide enough information to give you a ballpark for what we could expect out of there in the good, good parts of the year?
One of the really important things for the town to also recognize is, um, you know, it's now, again, not, you need to, the town of Peonya, but it's happening all across the state, is um, the assumptions people made on the amount of water available to them in the past may not hold true five, 10, 20 years from now. Um, the town of Peonya has one of the most unique water supply systems anywhere in the state, if not this country. You know, there, there, it was mentioned in a, in a report that was done maybe 10 years ago now. Trying to remember the date of it, that, uh, that was, that looked very closely at water supply versus demand and made comment to the changing nature of supply. So uh, um, again, I think uh, I think that, you know, it's not like we're going to, there's going to be a one-off at some point and all of the answers are always going to be, you know, all the answers are going to be presented all at once. Um, I think the town is going to make incremental decisions based on a specific question being asked at that, at this time. In regards to the tap moratorium, again, I think um, lifting it entirely based on a short amount of data is not what I would, is not a recommendation I expect to make. But I think there is the possibility of being able to you know, make recommendations to strategize where um, the town's, you know, current distribution system and based on what we know about the supply, you know, you know, where confidence could be had supporting additional users and customers.
Okay, yes. Ms. Smith? Well, I just have a couple of technical questions on the second page of your letter, which refers to repairs to existing distribution system pressure-reducing valves has been completed. And I have not heard that that has been completed as a trustee. So I'm going to ask Ms. Corinne to provide a report to us soon about what has been completed. And then just secondly, a new PRV has been installed as recommended. And I was not familiar that a new PRV had been installed.
No, no.
Is this what should be done?
Yes, Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, that's correct. Those are suggestions on, um, general suggestions on things that should be done before the moratorium um, has any modifications.
Okay, sorry, excuse me, my mistake. Um, but it does beg the question, where are we with the PRVs? That is probably one of the most important things we need to have going. And there has been no information provided to us at the status. So I'm, I'm turning my attention to our administrator to give us more information on that because those are two very important reasons to not um, do anything to change the moratorium. Thank you. All right, yes, Mr. Brier.
Um, in the event that you do a file report, um, is it typical that you would have a degree of confidence in the recommendations, like say you say the moratorium should be lifted? But if we would know the level of confidence you have in those predictions, that would be helpful for us to make decisions.
Absolutely. Uh, how to quantify that sometimes is easier than others, but the, the point is well taken and it will be um, made just to emphasize, emphasize that. Yeah, I think that could have been expected anyways. I think the, to offer, uh, you know, to offer, you know, positivity here, I think the efforts that the, the town has made since the water crisis, despite, you know, not you know, being as far as, you know, when the mic, you know, we have a lot to work with now that didn't previously exist. So like assessing um, whether or not a tap moratorium could be lifted without, you know, the water model that was built with the data that SGM collected and then, you know, was used by us to build a water model. The town does have a lot of tools at its disposal to make good decisions going forward.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? All right, seeing none. I will allow the public to answer, to ask one question apiece. And we're not going to argue with Mr. Stein. Just ask the question, get it answered, and we're going to move on. Um, anything from?
Anything from, questions from Mr. All right, seeing none. Thank you so much for this update. Very helpful and we will look forward to getting more data and moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Likewise, thank you, everyone.
We're not doing a motion or anything.
I know, would you accept public comment?
If we had a motion on the table, I would, however, we do not, so we're going to move on.
I'm willing to accept public comment for this item.
You have a second? All in favor? I oppose? Okay, Mr. Turner, you're up.
I would like to have a definitive answer on how much money we've spent so far with this company on these studies. I would like to point out that three years worth of data is probably a real number. For the conclusions to be drawn here and we're almost two and a half years into this moratorium. And the staff has absolutely failed. To collect the required data. Why is that? There's a real team to be built here. As far as a partial lifting of the moratorium. There is a statutory requirement that the engineer is going to stake his license on the answer to this question. How much can we sell? Reasonably without affecting the people that already own taps. There's some really hard work to do here and. It just isn't even that started.
Thank you, Mr. Anyone else? All right, let's move on to Turner and Mooney Cabin ditch habitat replacement plan. So the board did have a chance to go out and look at. Habitat replacement plan and ask a lot of questions and the board has also been given the entire plan. So. We do, the action for tonight is to. Approve the agreement between Turner Ditch Company and. Thank you. To go ahead and begin this process. So let's start off if, why don't we put a motion on the table to approve these and then we can take questions and comments.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with Pilot Rock. As to Turner Ditch. Habitat modification.
So it's Turner Ditch and. Okay, all right, so the motion is to approve the agreement with Turner Ditch and Pilot Rock. Do I have a second? All right, discussion from the board.
Yes, I have questions as usual. I actually have questions based on page numbers. So I don't know if somebody would like to. Be at the podium to maybe provide answers for me. Because I have some very specific comments regarding the report for the plan. Thank you, I just hope that might be the most expedient way to do this. My first question is on page fifteen and there's a reference to dry tailings from the treatment ponds being put in. Area A. So my question is, are, where are tailings, the dried tailings going right now?
Oh, that's not a question.
Well, no, it's a question for. Are those being land applied now, Corinne? The tailings, the dried tailings from the treatment ponds, are they being land applied anywhere? So to me, that's a huge issue to simply make this casual statement. That those will be applied to area A when that is a. As I understand, a very large permitting exercise. So if, if this, if the success of the area A is dependent on those tailings being put there, I would. I would remove this language altogether because I think you're going into a different realm you don't want to be in. And then I also, as I brought up previously in that area, I don't know why you would mow it if it's for wildlife habitat. It would be disruptive. I would recommend you put grasses in any place in there that don't need to be mowed. And I have page, on page sixteen. You talk about putting weed barriers down and you're talking about a polypropylene weed barrier that according to the Kansas. Bulletin, they biodegrade in ten to twenty years, but I question that here and. And so I really recommend you do not put down weed barrier across this many acres to let it just sit there and decompose. I don't think that's good for the environment, doesn't sound like a good thing for wildlife habitat. And I think you could use chips or something else, might cost more, but I personally cannot approve this plan. With weed barrier being put down, the proposal of dried tailings to augment section A. And the plastic pipe being buried under. Under section A and left there into perpetuity. I, I just cannot approve that for wildlife habitat on native ground. That the town of Peonia is responsible for and. And I was kind of curious about the herbicide section. So there's a table there that you, from the folks up in Cedar Edge, I understand, and. You certainly do not want to use the cheaper chemical near the river. The chemical that is rated for water is much more expensive, but I would completely take out any reference to using a chemical that should not be applied. Near the river. And. And you could save some money by changing your seed mixture that you have posted in here for those areas that are going to be disturbed by the pipeline. I've done reclamation. Those warm season species are very expensive and very hard to establish and they're not necessary there. Smooth brome is a very aggressive species, either just do all wheatgrass or smooth brome, you really, you're just wanting to get that area. In place, keep it in place. You don't need a lot of diversity around the pipeline. So I would not go to that length to do that kind of a diverse seed mix for something as really as small disturbance as you have there. So those are my comments and I honestly cannot approve this plan with those sections in here. And again, I'm only one trustee, but those are things that from my environmental perspective, I, I just can't approve. Thank you.
Any other questions? From the board? All right, yes.
This is not necessarily for you all, but anybody that, I'm seeing the rights reserved here. Packet page fifty-two, section four, part B. Landowner reserves the right to issue additional licenses right away or permits for compatible uses of lands that do not conflict with the damage. Or damage to habitat replacement improvements. Does anybody know what compatible uses might be included in that? Or anything that might be specifically excluded from that?
One thing that we have to look at sometime in the very near future is we're going to have to take our wastewater from. The streets, we're going to have to have a place, a settling pond and someplace for that to go. And that's coming up and I think in less than eight years, it hits our town socks. And that's going to be a fairly expensive process, but if we can use that area. As a just, not disposal area, but we can use it to put the water on it. And that'll help the habitat as well. And it's something that, you know, it's not in the immediate future, but we really need to look at it now because it's going to be a major capital expense. And this is a prime place to put that water. And not just put it into the river, we have to deal with hydrocarbons and. You know, whatever is in that. And I don't know what the regulations are going to be. If they get really, really technical, if we can reach it into the ground, it takes out that, that problem. And we also have a problem with our sewer plant. The engineers recommending we go with mechanical. Augmentation, we go with mechanical plant. And I've been arguing since I came onto the board, my very first day for a manufactured marsh, a manmade engineered marsh. To get rid of our ammonia, actually it's the nitrates, nitrites, and we can get rid of the phosphates as well. And it's old technology, we can do it, it's not real expensive, but we need land. And that's another thing that. Kind of gives me a little pause for this because we may have to disturb some of that. It's going to be a wetland and. I don't know if we can afford to do it, but we're going to have to at some point. We're already out of compliance at least part of the year with the nitrates. Especially in the summer and when the water in the river is the lowest flow. We have the worst time. And if we could get it so we can apply it on the land and then have a polishing pond and then it goes out and drink water quality and it can be. That's a, I think we should aim for that.
Rick, we did this back in the beginning. When we put in the sewer plant, the whole idea was having space for land application. And some of that land's been sold. So it's cut down our ability to do land application. Now, you and I both pushed for bohrash pond or something to actually do. Cleaning, but it was a little bit too radical for that trust.
But we're kind of straying from. Our motion here.
We are, but it comes back to it in that, what are we going to do with that land? I think that's the key thing which you come to. So if we're going to run wastewater connect, that can't go through the sewer pipes, can it? That pipe didn't, has to be separate. So I've been cutting another pipe. That's a deep pipe.
That's a lot of money.
So back to this, the habitat replacement project. All right, anything else from the board? Yes.
Well, given that, and I have equal concerns about us having enough room for the future. Which means that perhaps. Besides my problems with your report. If there was a way to change the contract to acknowledge potential need. For that land, which could potentially serve as wildlife habitat while it's also serving the. The sewer cleanup and storm sewer perhaps and the public sewer. It, it could be a trade off of wildlife habitat because wildlife will use those wetlands. There's no. If, than's about it, but it's just a paradigm shift of what you're going to see out there. And I think you would still have to do everything you're doing now to meet the Department of Reclamation, Bureau of Reclamation. But if this could be written or open ended to allow the town to create wildlife habitat. Through. It's engineered wetlands. Maybe that's a way to get about, get after it.
All right, anything else? All right, anything from the public? Yes, Miss Watt.
I don't, I don't have questions for the Turner Ditch people, but I do have questions for you.
Is this on the contract?
Yes. It sounds like you, it sounds to me. You're doing this without even having any strategic plan in place. This is a big commitment. And I, I think that your strategic planning session, maybe your goal should be. To get the players that the town helps the town with its systems like the Colorado Rural Water Association. Up here to look at what we have out there, to help you look into the future with what we need. And you guys need to do some planning immediately on this. Perhaps this should be the topic of your strategic plan. You could go ahead and help. Because you're being really asked to commit to something that it's, it's long term. It could have a huge impact and I don't get the sense that we have enough of an understanding of what the future holds for us. To make any decisions and it's really about the area A. I mean, I'm, I'm very in favor of seeing some habitat down toward the river. But I think you need to be a little bit more sure. Of, of, of what the future holds. And also when you talk about the town doing the wildlife habitat in the future, what's that going to cost us? I mean, if it's just changing the sewer system, that's going to be enough of a cost. So if we have to commit ourselves to doing that into the future, just to satisfy. I don't know, anyway, okay, I'm rambling itself.
Could I answer Suzanne? Just because I was the one that. We would not be creating wetlands for wetlands sakes. The wetlands would be doing the cleanup.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So that would be actually the system that we put in.
Be a dual.
So that would be good.
A plus plus.
Okay, but I really do think, I'm wondering if there's a way to maybe not decide it tonight, but decide it soon. Bring the Turner Ditch people to the strategic planning. Meeting, bring Dana, if he can help facilitate it, and bring the CRWA. And who, who can really help us look at our sewer system and look what we have to look in the future. And we won't have three years of data, but maybe it will be enough to make a good decision at, at the short notice. Thank you.
Oh, yes, Miss Patterson. Did we get Ms. Patterson unmuted so that she can make her comment? Oh, she has to mute herself, okay. I think we're just going to go ahead and move on. All right. Anything else from the public? Yes, sir.
We'd like to make your comments.
Absolutely.
Our plan, we've been planning this for well over a year and a half and we've worked with the county people in the planning process. We even brought in as far as being a footprint and stuff, as far as the sewer stuff, sludge and that kind of stuff too. We've got people placed to make this work. We've already got that lined up, a contractor to take care of the basic species. We've got Jake with the conservation group up there, he's really up to date on this. This is something that proceeds. You guys are landowners and you're part of the ecosystem of the river. This all ties together where you guys are trying to do your part. I know you got to do your part, but you got to do the rest of it too. And we've got help, plus we've got money, we're helping furnish money to help you guys step forward and take care of this. It's going to be hard for you guys to do, we've got expertise to do that, so. This has been a plan for well over a year and a half, so. So it's pretty important for us to move forward on this.
Thank you. So we do have a comment from Ms. Patterson. She says, my. You are looking at a fifty year contract. Do you, as trustees, have the information you need? To determine whether this is the highest invest use of the available land. All right. All right, any further comment? Yes.
I'd like to address that. That land down there is flood scour. And basically, every time the river floods really deeply, it runs over it and it wipes everything that's on there off, except a few willows. Russian olive. This would be a real plus for that area because when we built the sewer plant, we cut off the water flow. The subsurface flow and also the ditch overrun and. It kind of killed that area and it's highly stressed, the cottonwoods. I know about that area because I used to be on the mosquito board and I walked that area a number of times looking for mosquitoes. So that area needs some help now. It's been hurting for a lot of years. And I think that this is a good way to go forward. I also think that we can definitely work with. Our plans for the sewer plant down there on this. We probably will end up acquiring more of that bottom at some point. But its value is pretty low because you can't build on it, you can't crop it and. We can obtain it fairly cheaply. The problem is for us is we have to be far enough away from the river so we won't be flooded. And that's where we're at.
Thank you.
If we. Want to use that land for something slightly different, like you're talking about application, I haven't gone through this because I'm late on. Do we have the options in this or how locked in are?
Well, it does say that as long as it's compatible with the use, which is wildlife.
You guys agree with that?
All right.
I just wanted to make one more point to Ms. Smith, trustee. So these plans are, some of the detailed. Input that you gave us tonight, can we can take and incorporate? Your suggestions in, into our planning, it's. This is just the initial stage of agreeing that we can move forward with. With the license agreement, so I appreciate your input.
I'm Daryl Hawk. Living on Conwood Creek Road, by the Nino Rock or Crawford, president of Otter Rock Ditch. I'm trying to make this short and sleek, as well spoken as a lot of you, but I speak from heart. I'm trying to make this short and sleek, as well spoken as a lot of you, but I speak from heart. Our ditch needs to be piped. It slid in 2019 because of the drought situation. Not only for our use, but so that we don't tear up land and stuff. This year we're in a drought situation. Our ditch, the hillside got saturated. We were afraid it was going to slide. I contacted the board members and we shut our ditch off. Again, I speak from, speak from the heart. I'm on a, I know there's protocol. I know things have to be done correctly. But I would ask you, our community is hurting. We don't have water and there's water going down the creek, but we had to shut our ditch off. And I know that's, in a way, that's not your concern. But if we could expedite this process in any way, this is a government project. I don't want to talk the government down and fund it. But it's a slow process. And if we could expedite this in any way so that we could get our pipe order, it's time sensitive. We need to get this done this year. If we have, there's some ranches there that if we don't have water for next year, they're going to go broke. And I think I'm, I'm not off from that. And I would just ask of you to, I know there's a process, I understand that. But I would just ask that if you could find a way, I think this is a win-win-win situation. There's going to be 330,000 bucks. And we're going to replenish the cottonwoods. We're going to take some of the old dead cottonwoods. We're going to Cassandra knows more to speak to that point. But we are going to improve this habitat and stuff. If we just get the approval to go ahead from this, then we can proceed with our construction site. All our EAs, everything's been done on that public comment and everything on our construction site's been done. We're just waiting. These are the BORs. Their specifications, we have to get our habitat plan in place. And I think this is a really good plan. There's been a lot of time and effort put on. We're now on our eighth one. It's been a really slow, frustrating process. It's been three years. My wife and I have worked on this a lot. We're representing some other people in the, in the community, obviously, but it's one of the most frustrating things I've ever been involved in. You do something, you get a, you get a goal, you get it done. And I'm not putting this all on you guys. But you are a part of it. So we would appreciate and thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
One quick comment. It's hard to plan 50 years down the road. How can we look that far? It looks like habitat goal is the best plan to go. We hope that you improve long-term and afterwards. So it's hard to plan that far ahead, but you know, everything was a really good plan.
All right. So we have a motion on the table to approve the wildlife habitat license agreement for Tenerife and Pala Rock. Is the board ready to vote? All right. All in favor? All right, that plan passes.
Thanks for your pitch.
Yes, thank you very much. All right. Next on the agenda is legacy events. We have the revised application put together by the town administrator that would address this. And I believe on yeah, it's the packet. Sixty-three. Well, that's the whole thing, but the relevant parts of it begin on sixty-six. And sixty-seven. So questions from the board on this for the town administrator or if you have any questions for Rob or Sunshine that's back there. But first let's see if there's any questions for the town administrator.
Yes, I'm, I'm just waiting because I'm always the first one with my hand up. I don't want to bogart. So I was, there is a reference to a street closure form, which I could not find on the website. And then I wondered about banners, a banner form that usually goes along with these legacy events, and I don't see a banner form. And if those could be created and made part of the, the entire package. And there was mention of the, the event holders would buy the paper products or after the town provides whatever the amount was. And are our bathrooms where, is it possible for a person without a key to actually take the toilet paper rolls off? Because you know, some places they're locked.
Yes, they can.
So it's, there's that. So we have to then, you're suggesting that they then pick up all the paper goods after the initial I can't remember the amount. A one case of paper towels and total paper for each event. And does each event mean, mean a three, for three days, they get one case of paper towels, one thing of paper? Or if it's a three day event, do they get one case of each every day?
The suggestion came from discussion about how we could make this work for everyone involved. And so that was my initial suggestion, putting in there was one case for each event, whether that was consecutive or up to. I mean, if we're not just going to buy a case and say, here you go, and what you don't please take home. But just up to a case would be provided and purchased for the events and then if there was additional needed beyond that, then, then it would be the event holder.
So it'd be per permit?
Yes.
Okay. And there's a bullet point on page sixty-three saying an authorized town attorney representative may terminate the event at any time for good cause. And they must vacate. It seemed, that seemed like a very broad arbitrary statement. I wondered if there are town ordinances that they would have to be violating, which would be cause for termination that could be referenced here. Rather than something quite so open-ended.
Yes.
It's just a suggestion.
And the draft resolution was, was just that. It's not, it's not presented for approval of the resolution itself. It was for board to review and provide feedback. So that the town attorney.
Okay. Another question. Is there a forum for events for less than a hundred people in town parks?
There is.
Okay. I couldn't find that on the webpage either. Because I was trying to do a little research before I asked questions. Hang on, I have one more question, but let me find it. Sorry. I noticed that on page sixty-six, the only change to the item under trash is there were on the previous, I guess, on the current application, it says how many dumpsters and how many trash cans. So you're deliberately leaving it open-ended. And what they get when they go to use that is what they get. Right?
The numbers were taken out, so it just leaves for what's on site. So there's a removal of a trash can for damage. We're not violating the agreement because one trash can is on site.
Perfect. And question further down on that page about recycling. Should a multi-day event provide recycling and $50 credit shall be applied? That's inconsistent with what picking in the park, I think they got a $200 credit for all four nights. So I, I don't quite understand what this means, and that can be a point of discussion. I'm just bringing up the questions that came to me. And then lastly, on the top of page sixty-seven is you all have provided to us items submitted for consideration. Which I'm assuming are the items that maybe we need to discuss and pick and choose from in order to create a consistent definition for what is a legacy event.
So following the discussion, there was a lot of talk about it being over a five year. So initial thought was that these would be items of consideration when making the determination that this would be a legacy event. Is it free? You know, people can come and attend. It doesn't mean you're not paying for goods or services that are there, but you can attend, which is congruent with the town's policy on parks being open regardless of events being held. Two, are you a registered nonprofit? You're not doing this for a for-profit entity. And three, are you an annual event? And if you are, how long have you been, you know, is it over five years, less than five years? And if you meet all of these and it's been five years or more, then that would meet the definition of a legacy event. Based on the board's conversation direction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other comments about this? Yes, Mr. Mark?
Just, yes. I don't have a motion. So is it appropriate to just comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
Overall, it seems a little bit scattered. I know it's based on the existing form because it's what was filled out for the when it was in earlier in the packet. But it seems like a lot of this could be reorganized to a more compact and comprehensive contract is essentially what this is. And it's got some parts of requirements, some parts are what was to be fulfilled by town, parts of it are what's to be fulfilled by the vendors. It's kind of like a giant tangle of random information. I think it might be, and I don't know what the appropriate venue would be, but just have say, Rob Miller and I don't know if this representative from the BMW rally or whoever, whoever might be interested, but get those guys together and let them sit down and see what would be useful for them. Rather than trying to create these, trying to checklists and additional hoops to jump through. What I heard in our last meeting, two weeks ago, was that the town hasn't been, or rather the organizers don't feel supported by the town. And so I think that maybe the best approach would be to ask them for their input so that we can then act on their behalf rather than making them jump through a bunch of hoops to be able to use our park.
Okay, thank you. So do you need more feedback than what you've gotten?
No, I would add that for some historical perspective, this application actually came from the conversations and meetings with the groups that Mr. Miller was speaking about at the last meeting about how they came together with the town and the town clerk at that time and created a process and discussed the fees. And it was picking in the park and BMW rally and charity days that did that. Now, of course, that being said, does it learn a lot from doing once you create? So coming back together and looking at it and looking for updates is not unfeasible at all. If the board is open to allowing staff to coordinate that in need, I would love to do so and bring back those suggestions to the board.
Did somebody like to make a motion for that effect? Or did we just?
I feel like the one thing we need to discuss and make a decision on, in addition to the form being rewritten potentially, is what is our definition of a legacy event?
And I would agree with you.
Okay, I was afraid we were going to get
No.
Ask that, sorry.
No, we can just, you know, informally direct the county administrator to try and reorganize the board with the input from three big events.
Yeah, regarding the legacy qualification?
Yeah.
I think Christina Patterson's suggestion at the previous meeting is an excellent way to handle it. Regarding if they're waiving of fees or not, not waiving of fees, but essentially the suggestion was to use some of the funds that are budgeted every year for contributing to nonprofit organizations. And use them to support one of these nonprofit organizations that's going to be using for park. And then it could be at the discretion of the board as to whether or not we want to do that. And it makes the financial half of it completely transparent. And it still creates an opportunity for us to say, well, you know, turns out that this event isn't in our best interest as a community. We're going to, you know, despite having been around for five years now, Rob's running a punk rock late night show that we don't like anymore. Or whatever, you know, for whatever circumstances might change, having some more subjective input on it might be useful to future boards rather than giving them rules to run by.
Okay, thank you. Any other suggestions? All right, Paige.
Well, Michelle Patterson actually sent us an email with a couple of really good bullet points, including the one that Thomas just described. But she said, perhaps ask the event organizers to apply in August so it can be considered during the budget session as well. If we were to create a fund, but I think that would be good to know anyway, because these are legacy events and everybody knows they're going to do them. And then decide on a maximum dollar amount per day that the town contributes.
Yes.
A lot of this discussion is kicking again down the road because we're going to prove the budget for next year and not right now. So I'd like to make a motion that we declare the BMW rally, the mountain harvest festival, picking in the park, gent, charity days as legacy events that will be exempt from fees this year.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
Sure.
And for the discussion from the board? Yes.
The reason I'm making is we, I think that what we would like to do is if you only are setting up those four events as legacy events, what are the descriptors for those events so that?
I'm just doing it for this year. You've figured it out from the end on. I just want to move the needle here. So we've actually made a decision for these events.
So in this case, we are going to, we are going to not try to define a legacy event until later.
Declaring these are the legacy.
Okay.
I think history is defining the legacy.
All right. And yes, Mr. Thomas?
Can I move to modify that?
Yes, if you wish.
Move to exclude picking in the park. We already had a motion that that would not be.
Oh, legacy event for this year. Okay, yes, we can keep that. Oh, well, do I have a second on that?
At our previous meeting, we, we determined that we would not waive the fee for picking in the park this year. Because Smith offered to.
Right. Oh, all right. So.
So I'd like to save Smith's money. Yeah, just let's be consistent.
All right. Okay. So we have a motion and a second to declare mountain harvest festival, picking in the park, BMW rally and charity days as legacy events for this year. You agree with the discussion?
Except take out picking in the park.
Oh, no, we're going to put it in. Yeah. Yes, Miss Watson.
I have a problem with fairness. We saw an event, Learning Council, they're nonprofit. They're trying to start something up. When I see these legacy events, I see well-funded, well-organized, well-supported events that use our parks. But you get the small newbies that are maybe struggling a little bit more. Maybe it's a little harder for them to come up with the money and we're not supporting them. There seems to be something that's just kind of not fair. I mean, it's like, it's like supporting GM and Ford, but not supporting the little innovative upstarts. And they're the ones who really need the help, in my opinion. And that being said, maybe to show, I, I like the idea of doing the either lottery drawing or whatever you're talking about with the funding that we have for nonprofits. That's, that, that seems more fair to me. And maybe if you'd like to say, hey, guys, we support all of you. We're not going to be charging you an illegal banner permit fee because we don't have anything on the books for a banner permit fee. We shouldn't be taking your money for that. And maybe just offering to put up their banner for free because that's what it should be, free. We do not have a legitimate way to charge for that and they've been charged for year after year. So maybe that would be our way to support them, saying we'll advertise your event over our street with your banner. And we won't charge you anything for that. So anyway, for everybody, but I, I don't think it's fair to exclude the, maybe the innovative, smaller nonprofits that might be out there. Thank you.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Did you, are you going to type or are you going to talk?
I'm going to talk. You can hear me. Okay, so I, I want to agree with most of what Ms. Watson said. I think that by focusing on events that have been around for five years or longer, you are losing a lot of great benefit to the town. There's the Colorado Food and Farm Alliance, Farm and Food Alliance that you have on the agenda tonight. There's the farmer's market that happened in the park last year. You have some great events that are a benefit to the community. And I'll reiterate what I said at a previous meeting, which is that I don't see a better use of our town park, of our public spaces than events like these that bring the community together. And so I think whatever the town can do to support those events is a good thing. And I, I really think you're losing a lot of value by waiting until the five-year mark to decide that an event is worthy of your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else from the public? Yes, Mr. Bird.
I took a walk through the park this morning just to, you know, look at it, really try to see what is there. And I think you're offering something to these people that is in danger of disappearing. The parks not being taken care of. And I think that's really serious. And I urge you to very soon put on your list, once again, hiring a contractor to take care of the park. It was a dirty deal that moved the last guy out of there, and it's gone downhill ever since. There's trees that are in danger of dying, the grass is disappearing, there's weeds everywhere. You need somebody that knows how to take care of a park, and that's their job. So please, consider that.
Thank you. All right, anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second to make for this year. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you guys.
Amy DeLuca. So when I first moved to town, I was the director for charity days for a couple of years. And now I am the director for Mountain Harvest Festival. And I was sat in on some of those early meetings when I was with the Paradise around fees and whatnot. And, you know, I think that my recollection was that the board was giving admin a hard time because they were spending a lot of time on handling all of the paperwork and all the requirements for having festivals and events. And so it became an admin job, and we didn't have to come before the board to get approval. And that really helped. But the only thing is then if you need a liquor license, then you still need to come in front of the board. And, you know, we had this very organized checklist, and we went through, we made sure every single document was on the checklist. It was really tight. So I haven't seen what you guys are looking at. But as somebody who's about to do another event this summer for the community, I think that this is a smart choice to support the events and maybe also reach a little bit farther, which it sounds like we will, and I look forward to that, to talk about a little more fine details on how that can go. You know, these legacy events are what make this town special. And I'm also a big advocate for the business community here, and we don't hear a lot of that in these meetings. We, you know, I haven't, in the last several councils, I haven't heard a lot of pro-business language here. So I'm going into my eighth year as being a grand advocate business owner, and I feel like the more we can do to support our business community, the longer this town will thrive and people can feed their families and afford to live here, so.
Thank you, Ms. DeLuca.
I was actually just sort of trying to say.
Okay.
Thank, I do support the proposal and in response to Suzanne, we are not organized or well-funded, I can assure you. But I do like the idea of supporting the little guys too. But, you know, I mean, I think it's a good proposal. And I'm not speaking, I do the entertainment for charity days, but I'm not, I'm speaking as a citizen, not as a charity days representative per se, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peterson. All right, any others? Rob?
Three meetings in two hours, I figured I gotta say something, right? Thomas, thank you so much for that suggestion. I think getting together with Corinne and everybody is the right way to do this, to find out ways where you guys could support us if you feel good about it. I do, the one, the one hiccup in this evening is although we appreciate the approval of waiving fees this year, I was hoping that at least we would define a legacy event tonight because it seems like that would be getting something done. I guess also to address Suzanne a little bit, we also are not well-funded. We raise every penny every year, where some of the organizations you mentioned own buildings now and stuff, you know. So, and so anyway, I guess really the point is just to, what do you guys think about trying to define a legacy event? I'm comfortable with five years, but honestly, I was thinking a 10-year event. I mean, it takes a while to really establish an event the way these four events are established. So that's what I would throw out to, to consider, legacy be over 10 years. And, and then that way we can kind of move on from here. Because I think the next, after we establish what we establish in this next phase, the next phase is gonna be budget meeting. And we're gonna talk about kind of where these things go. If we walk into this fall's budget discussion with saying legacy events and new events, that would kind of help us have that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone? All right.
I have one comment. And that is, once upon a time, we had a Parks Committee. And what the Parks Committee would have done would have been filtered 90% of what happened right now. And now what would have been presented to the board in much less time would have been a condensed version. A lot of the details would have already been shook up. That's why I wanna go back to doing.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second to this year waive the fees for Mountain Harvest Festival, BMW rally, charity days, and picking in the park. Oh, I thought that was, she already commented on what's on this issue, so we're just. All right, all in favor of the motion?
All in.
All right, that motion passes. All right, next we have the Ad hoc committee recommendation for the modify trustee meeting procedures. All right, anything you wanna say, Dave, in, as we begin this discussion?
Actually, my partner in crime, Jeff Thompson's not with us tonight, that's the reason I didn't discuss it on Monday. I feel with a new board, we need to get our hands around what meeting parts work for us best.
Okay.
And I think that, I'd like to, I think a lot of people in the audience right now have not come for this agenda. They came for the agenda of trees, and they've been waiting patiently. I'm just gonna defer this one right now.
You wanna continue it?
Yeah.
Or to, to a date, or do you wanna just continue?
No, I'm just gonna. For several meetings now. For some good ideas, someone who you'd like to. It's time to start as a board come together.
We have three.
I was asked to turn it on so that people in the back.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 'cause I speak pretty quietly a lot of times. I think the board can make recommendations given you and use the ones you think are valuable, use the ones, you know, throw out the ones you don't think are gonna be helpful, make better meetings. Jeff and I spent a lot of time on trying to make you, give you some suggestions about maybe how we do meetings. So I am not really expecting a discussion like that. I'm trying, people like to, people that have shown up for other reasons.
Okay.
All right, could I just make a suggestion?
Yes.
I had quite a few comments that I've made on this over the last several meetings, reading it again. So maybe I should put my comments, writing memo, and send it to Corinne. She could share it when this does get on the agenda.
Or you can share it before.
Well, I don't know if she can.
No.
Follow this.
Oh, absolutely, she can, she does, right?
Open meetings. I'm afraid that that would be an open meetings violation.
No, it would not. It would not be an open meetings violation. All she's doing is sharing information.
Well, she's sharing my opinions.
Which will come up back up beyond the agenda. When this comes up on the agenda, I just wanna get them lost. Yes.
Just for clerk, for clarification for that, part of the reason you provide that information to the clerk, administrative clerk, is so anything that's provided to me and shared with the board is a record. So if anyone wanted to see that, they could. It makes a record of.
Okay, so, yes.
I, I guess the committee still exists, right, that hot committee?
No.
No?
Well, Jeff is term.
Right, he's coming.
Okay, I assume you also have my email with my analysis of meeting time, speaking?
Yeah, I also have an analysis I did in March.
I bet you. So I think that it might be productive to kind of take this discussion and make it a part, a normal part of our meetings. Say at the end, just have a rebuttal, I don't know if there's a good term for it, but just a review of how we think the meeting went and what might be changed. And then we can take one thing from this meeting and change it for next meeting. So, and then we can go through an iterative process. So we can take something off of this list, you know, and say, okay, we think this is a good idea, let's try it next meeting this way. And just make small changes like that, and one at a time, you know, rather than revising the whole process and going bottom up, just, just small bites, you know. So that would give us the opportunity to do analysis and to revert easily if we didn't like away something.
Okay. So we can, can we just add that at the end of the agenda every time from now on? Does the board generally agree with that?
Process review?
Process review? Okay.
And so I'll move that we add a process review agenda to the end, or item to the end of next meeting's agenda.
All right, do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
All in.
Close? All right. We shall do that.
Can I have a question answered?
Sure.
Is it worth sending my comments on what we have here then? Or maybe they're moved? Is this good? Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I will send my analysis of meetings to Ms. Ferguson as well. We should get this to the board as well. All right, next we have, I'm sorry, what? Yes. It's gone. All right, we have the resolution 06, 2022.
I move that we table the appointment officer pending performance review.
It has to be done by the 28th.
No, doesn't. Actually, here's what sources said, and it's based on misinterpretation of Title 31. So let me read this here. State law requires the town board to appoint and provide for elections certain officers including clerk, treasurer, and town attorney deplorable statute, CRS 31 dash four dash 304 states and permanent part. Board of trustees shall appoint a clerk, treasurer, and town attorney or shall provide by ordinance the election such or officers. May appoint such other officers, including the town administrators and deans necessary for the good government of the corporation. This is the point you're talking about. No appointment of any officer shall continue beyond 30 days after compliance with section 31 dash four dash 401 by the members succeeding board of trustees. In some cases, the town board fails to act within 30 days to appoint or reappoint officers in town. Further, in many cases, these positions are staffed with municipal employees, which can lead to uncertainty in employment when the town board fails to reappoint employee to one of these appointed positions. These and other circumstances raise the question, what is the impact not making an appointment within the 30-day period after new board members are seated? In short, if 30-day period of set ordinance section passes, the term of the officer expires. However, it is important to note, the expiration of the term does not necessarily automatically outsay the individual holding the office from that position and create a vacancy. Rather, absent provisions to the contrary in state law or local ordinance, public interest requires that public offices shall be filled at all times without interruption. The Colorado Constitution hears this principle stating in Article 12, Section 1, that quote, "Every person holding a civil office under a state or municipality therein shall unless removed according to law exercise of duties in such office until his successor is due requalify." Therefore, an individual holding an appointment of office in statutory town remains in that position after his or her term is expired until a successor is properly appointed by the town board takes office. The purpose of that section of 31 dash four dash 304 wasn't that everything had to be done within 30 days, it was to prevent an outgoing set board from saddling incoming board with pre-appointed officers.
Okay.
So, I think it's something, it's an important thing, we need to take some time, I don't think we should rush it.
Okay, well, the other thing is that we have an ordinance in this town, so they have to.
I know, but I did say that the.
And it says in the statute that unless prescribed by the town or city ordinance, which our ordinance then prescribes that we appoint within 20.
Yeah, I'd say that actually the Constitution and the CRS trumps any ordinances we got.
So it makes exception in the CRS ordinance for town halls.
Can you quote me the title and chapter?
Of our ordinance?
Our ordinance actually mandates it has to be done, because that's not.
Yes, yes, it does.
I'm listening.
I don't have it on this computer, it's on my computer.
Okay, so, pending that, I've made a motion. I have a second. Pass it down to you. That the appointment of officers be tabled pending performance review.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Discussion by the board?
Um, I won't be first, sorry.
You won't be first.
Okay.
How many times are we supposed to review current performance in a one-year period of time? It seems like we can hear six months, sick reviews. I think we have discussions with people about how we think their performance is going and have a formal review process for everyone at the same time.
But you're asking me to make a decision tonight without actually having seen any of those reviews, is that correct?
All of those reviews are public record?
Yeah. Are the reviews, I only know of reviews of the administrator.
Right, well, and the administrator reviews the people that serve under Kirk.
Are they available for review? I've never seen them, that's why I ask, do they have those reviews available for review?
I know, it's part of personnel records as far as, yeah, and review of the attorney and the review of the judge?
If, what do we have? I mean, we're asked to make a pretty significant decision here, and I would like, I have trouble making decisions with no data.
Well, we just hired our attorney. He has been our attorney for five months. And then our judge has only been our judge for what, a year?
If I may, I came prepared with motions to deal with all three positions, treasurer, clerk, and attorney. And they are, well, you know my position on the treasurer, that we cannot have a finance officer, we have to have a treasurer. And my recommendation was that we create a finance committee that does much more and sign checks. It's an oversight committee that needs to be talked about in a resolution. And I have a second motion on the clerk, but I won't bring it up now because I'm, I'm saying I'm kind of giving you an alternative to deal with some of this. Because if we appoint Cindy as treasurer, there will be, at least there will be two trustees who she works directly with, based on statute. So we will have much more oversight of the treasurer and the deputy treasurer than then is now, because the weak link that has been continuing here is that the treasurer has been considered this peremptory person that we don't, may or may not need. The statutes require that you have a treasurer, and we have not been calling Cindy the treasurer, which I'm proposing we change, but that also puts Cindy, we, has oversight by the trustees and not the administrator.
Well, both, she would have oversight by both.
By both, but the trustees would have much more oversight based on statute.
Correct.
So a finance committee would have to be organized, and I feel like a resolution passed that clearly states what the trustees expect, you know, will be looking at so that we get monthly reports, et cetera, as required by statute. So that could potentially help your treasurer position. Yep, okay, you have that. So he has a motion to that effect. And, and then I have, I have another, which do you want?
What's the order?
Yeah.
What's, what's the motion?
Motion is to table.
Yeah.
The appointment of officers until we have some performance reviews.
Right.
Thank you. Are we discussing that?
Yeah.
Is it seconded?
Yeah.
I seconded it.
Yeah.
Well, and I'm doing discussion because I, I actually don't quite agree with that.
Oh, yeah.
So that's, that's my point, is I have some other alternatives.
But if it's tabled, you can come back with your motions once we, you know, we've got some data to work on.
It's just, does she agree with the, with the motion? I mean, that's.
I mean, I could go.
Hold on.
Well, is there any further discussion from the trustees? No? Okay, anything from the public? Yes, and what? Um, this uh reviews is a little troubling to me because if these positions answer to the board, the board should be creating an ad hoc committee and doing reviews. I don't, for some reason, it seems a little weird that you have um, your administrator doing the review for someone who you need to appoint. Um, I think you need to do it yourselves. That being said, when was the clerk ever reviewed? Uh, you're talking about Corinne being reviewed, that she's never been reviewed as a clerk, it's always administrator. So when did you actually review the clerk? I mean, I don't think the administrator would be reviewing the attorney or the judge. You need to make an ad hoc committee to look into these reviews. Or, you know, and if there is some information you've worked on, that's fine, but this needs to come as a board, board work. Um, that being said, um, I mean, this uh, this town is so cavalier about following its own ordinances. I mean, when our planning commission hears variances and they actually, so don't pull that one out. Because I mean, it's like, it's convenient to say that we follow the ordinances when you want to move forward, but I think we routinely ignore them. Um, so, um, yeah, and then also the thing about um, the treasurer, I'm a little concerned because I just heard Mary, or the mayor say um, that the the treasurer would answer, be um supervised by the administrator, but also by the board. And number one, two people can't really be supervising them, it has to be board, they can be a liaison between the board and the treasurer. But where do you maybe get people undermining? Uh, it could be like parents that don't agree with each other and that treasurer could be going and listening to who they want to hear. So that's, that sounds a little troubling to me. Um, you're gonna have to clarify that and I don't think tonight, you know, this might be a bigger discussion. And I do think, um, I do think that if you could look at reviews first, so you know what you're getting into, that would be great. Thank you. Okay, yes, Ms. Patterson.
I'm sorry, was that for me?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, um. Trustee Knutson, I heard you say that there have been too many performance reviews and just respectfully and mainly for the information of the new board, I would like to point out that the last administrator review was an informal interim review in June of twenty twenty one. And the last formal annual review of the town administrator was in December of twenty twenty. So I do not think the administrator has had an excessive number of reviews by the board. And while I get your point that the administrator does get feedback on a regular basis, that's feedback from individual trustees. That is not the board speaking with one voice and providing a formal performance review. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Mr. Bur.
So the ordinance we're talking about was the appointment of officers?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh. To hold their respective offices until successors, successors are duly appointed and qualified, provided that no appointment of any officer shall continue beyond thirty days. Mr. Robert was saying, after the members succeed, the board of trustees have taken their oath of office uh, following the biennial plan. It doesn't say that has to be done in thirty days.
It does.
It does? No, I just read it. It doesn't say that.
So it shall be appointed thirty days after what?
No. Doesn't say that. It says that it shall be filled by appointment from the board. It does not say that you must appoint within thirty days.
Within thirty days.
It doesn't say that, I'm sorry. You should read it. Anyway, the business of the uh a treasurer being responsible to the administrator, I question because I think the point of appointing officers is that it gives them an independence in their duties and they, there are direct reports to the board. And it is, it's, it it changes their position and the, and the organizational chart. Uh, and I'm glad that you're talking about having the uh committees again, but the objection to the committees before that brought about the demise, it was collateral damage. That was uh, finance committee seemed to be making and personnel committee seemed to be making administrative decisions on a daily basis. And that was the the basic objection that I had and that I remember other people making, that that came to this uh, overreaction of dissolving all the oversight committees. So please do the oversight, but as you're doing it, you may run into the same objection if your committees become administratively involved in day to day affairs. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, we have a motion on the table with the appointment of officers be tabled pending performance reviews. Is the board ready to vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So I think we need to poll it. Would you please poll the board?
Sure. Trustee Stelter?
Aye.
Trustee Smith, nay. Trustee Marco?
Aye.
Trustee Valentine?
Nay.
Trustee Knutson?
Nay.
And Trustee Webber?
Aye.
Okay, it is a tie-up and um, I tend to agree with Mr. Knutson and so I'm voting nay. So that motion fails. Alright, so we still have resolution to look at. So you had something about clerk?
Well, I'd like to start with the treasurer.
Okay.
So I move to appoint Cindy Jones as treasurer and abandon the position titled finance officer and finance clerk and require new job descriptions for both positions to be reviewed and approved by the trustee finance committee.
Okay.
I second that. That fits with CRS Title thirty one.
Right, alright, so. Thank you.
It's, it's great. Alright, could you see it?
Discussion by the.
Here we go.
Yeah, right, okay. Discussion by the board, oh. Yeah.
Um, shouldn't we designate a finance committee?
Well.
That's the next time.
Oh, that's the next one.
Yeah.
It's my second motion, yeah. Any other discussion by the board? Alright, and yes, Ms. Watson? Can you read that motion again? Yes, move to appoint Cindy Jones as treasurer and abandon the position titled finance officer and finance clerk and require new job descriptions for both positions to be reviewed and approved by the trustee finance committee. Um, a committee of two, even a committee of three cannot make a decision and approve job descriptions. You can recommend job descriptions to the full board for approval, but a committee cannot vote, cannot approve things like this. And we're gonna get right back into the same old problem of business happening in private with committees. If you're not careful, committees make recommendations to the board of trustees and the board votes to approve something. So you can do the work, but you have to bring it to the board for approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Bur.
Isn't the composition of job descriptions administrative task? I'm, I'm concerned about this board getting so far down into the weeds and it just gets ridiculous. Let me use an example. Quarter bottles, I'm saving money on that versus paying lawyers toward twenty-five dollars an hour for intermeetings.
That's another one.
Okay.
I know, but I'm just saying.
I have.
Let's be careful.
And the other thing is also, um, the finance clerk works beneath the uh finance officer and so the committee would have no jurisdiction of the finance clerk. That would be the purview of the finance officer.
And I would like to say that that is not clear and that should be discussed as a board. And the reason I said that we need to have a job description, which of course the intent is to bring it back to the board. I would not assume a committee could do it, but we have to get a handle on this. The trustees have the fiduciary responsibility for the town and we're not getting reports. So the statute is specifically written this way, so those that were elected to take the responsibility have the responsibility of making sure the information is provided properly, which is why the committee, in my opinion, should create the job description for the treasurer based on what's in the statute.
And I, and that's fine. I would just say finance clerk is not part of that.
That to me is a trustee, that's a trustee vote. That is not a unilateral because it's not the uh, it it mentions trustees clerk in the statute. And again, I don't think we need to split hairs on that at the moment because I feel like if we pass this motion, the next motion is to create a finance committee by resolution, which would contain all of the prescription of what that committee would be doing with the finance, with the clerk, with the treasurer. So it's iterative. I don't have all the answers right now. I had a couple suggestions in my memo, but it's an iterative process that we need to develop to be meeting statute.
And I think, yeah, personally, I think that's fine. I just think that to do it for the finance officers, absolutely, but not.
No, there is no finance officer and there is no finance clerk.
That's, and we have a finance officer, we need to change.
Point of order. This is not your decision. This is a decision.
Get to put in my.
This is not part of the decision-making at this moment. I have another motion for the committee to be formed. That becomes board decision.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may, um, I, I, we thought a little bit about, um, you know, I guess collapsing the finance director position into the appointed position of treasurer. And uh, from a legal perspective, we want to ensure that, um, you know, the town's employment relationship with the current finance director, um, is uh, properly analyzed. Um, so I'd, I'd request that, uh, you know, any uh, dissolution of that, of that position be subject to the attorney's review um, of that employment relationship.
Thank you, let's just, thank you.
We are mandated to have a treasurer, right? And when we tried to do it with Ross King separate, that was just another layer of bureaucracy that was unnecessary. I mean, Cindy is right now functionally a treasurer. So I say just give her the authority of being a treasurer and then have her report to the board as CRS thirty one.
And I, I am not, um, pardon me, if, I am not arguing that she cannot be appointed as treasurer or should not be appointed as treasurer. Um, it's just the relationship as finance director, um, we would like to review how that transition, um, would occur in terms of job descriptions.
Yes, could I ask, my question would be, that would be, that's exactly what the purpose of the trustee committee would be. To do that with you. And I think that the, that's my next motion, but the committee of trustees needs to be working with you directly on that. Our attorney, you or Jeff Conklin. I, I don't want any in-go betweens. I feel like the trustees have to have direct conversations with you as the attorney to develop this. And like I said, it's an iterative approach, which is different than what we've been doing. So respectfully, trustees should work directly with you on that along with, with Cindy and Corinne, frankly.
Yes, um, there's a layer here that I think everyone's missing. Right now, the personal rules protect Cindy in her job. She reports to the administrator. It is legally very, and I, I respect what our legal counsel is telling us right now. Because there are some potfalls around taking someone from a protected position underneath our personnel thing and now creating them. You know, in a at will kind of position. At will isn't the word I want to use, but an appointed position, there's a big difference in the terms and conditions of her employment. If we make that change, and I think it's wise to have a legal opinion on this before I make.
Again, I would ask that trustees be a part of that discussion. So I'm, I'm not saying it can't happen, but the trustees have got to be in more. We need a committee that oversees this and, and I want it to be done right and, and I want Cindy to be the treasurer. But we just need, it's a paradigm shift of how things have been conducted.
The uh Title thirty one also includes, uh, right after the section for the treasurer, it has section thirty one dash twenty dash three oh five to three oh seven, where the person handling the money is called a collector. So she's already obligated under that part of Title thirty one to report directly to the board when requested. But, um, we still need a treasurer because that's mandated. And I'm just saying, let's just collapse it and not make things overly complicated.
Anything else from the board? Okay, anything from the public? Okay, so we have a motion on the board to create, to appoint Cindy Jones as treasurer and abandon the position titled finance officer and finance clerk and require new job descriptions for both positions to be reviewed and approved approved by the trustee finance committee. All in favor? All opposed?
Nay. Yes.
Alright, did everybody vote?
I didn't vote.
I didn't vote aye, but I wanted to.
Yeah.
You, you kind of skipped there.
I'm voting aye.
I vote aye.
Alright, do we have, I think we need to poll the board again.
Yeah.
Yes.
Trustee Marco?
Aye.
Trustee Stelter?
Nay.
Trustee Knutson?
Nay.
Trustee Valentine?
Nay.
Trustee Smith?
Aye.
And Trustee Webber?
Nay.
Alright, that motion fails.
Could we have a short recess?
At five minutes, it was really, really fast, but so we're still stuck on resolution oh six twenty twenty two. So we still need to deal with resolutions oh six, or it's oh seven twenty twenty two. And treasurer seems to vote, or proposal for treasurer has been mixed.
Well, I think I would like to make a new motion perhaps on treasurer if the offensive language was um, the approved by the trustee finance committee. But it, it, what it, so, alright, no motion, I'm just.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Alright.
We're working as a motion team that, uh, that the finance officer of the town, the treasurer is prescribed by CRS Title thirty one.
Okay, do I, is there a second?
Second?
From the discussion from the board? Alright, anything from the public?
Well, no, wait, I would just, I was just thinking.
Wow.
Well, I agree with that. Well, never mind, no, I'm all good.
Okay, Mr. Bur.
Uh, can you repeat the motion?
Yes, that the finance officer, the champion, the treasurer is prescribed by CRS Title thirty one.
Right, so part, part of the reason to have the treasurer is, and the clerk and administrator is that you're taking some oversight so that the same person isn't taking the money in and putting it out and putting it in the bank accounts. Uh, so you've got two eyes on it. So just beware of the possibility that you are removing that separation of powers if you have an independent treasurer, which is vested in an employee under the supervision of the administrator. You, you're putting, okay, I hope it's not that way, but I, I, because I mean.
Our processes.
If, if, if the treasurer is the finance officer, the finance officer is in the organizational chart under the administrator, you've lost your separation there.
The treasurer answers directly to the board, so there's six people.
But if the treasurer is finance officer, finance officer doesn't answer to the board, finance officer answers to the administrator.
That's why the motion makes the treasurer answer both the board and the, I want to, we I hope, want to create a finance committee that would then have direct oversight.
Okay.
Of it.
Good.
Chris Lass, thank you. Um, so to reiterate, I have a question. Are you, um, you would be dissolving the finance officer position is what you're saying? And replacing with treasurer, is that correct with this motion?
We're changing the terms of, instead of being called a finance officer, should be called a treasurer as is required by state law.
Okay, and I do want to impress the importance of your oversight because if it's oversight. um, of the administrator, who's also the clerk, um, that's a problem too. That's problematic, because the clerk, I mean, that's that separation of duties that Bill Bruno was talking about. And then I also want to talk about, um, when Ken Knight was our administrator, I, I know there were some issues that after he left, um, Corinne, who was the clerk at the time, we were told that she couldn't say anything to the board because she was under duress and she feared for her job because Ken Knight. But the thing is, that's why the clerk cannot be answering to this administrator. If she's appointed by the board, she cannot be under duress. And if an administrator is misreading the code, it's the clerk's duty to say, board, I am the keeper of the code and you need to listen to me. There's something wrong happening here. It's being misinterpreted. And that clerk should not be afraid of being fired by the person who's misreading the code, for instance, or doing something wrong. And that's why you need that separation too. Um, I know it's confusing with this whole administrative form of government. And I want to say, I think when the clerk treasurer thing, that goes back to nineteen oh six, when the town was founded. We did not have administrators back then, so it really did kind of confuse things. It's, that's kind of a new, um, mechanism. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, yes.
Steve, what's that? It seems a bit that there's some parts of this that are getting missed, at least as far as I look at it. First of all, nobody's talked to Cindy if she wants to be treasurer. Second of all, I would assume, since she's a hired, you know, she's an employee, to get rid of her position, to have to fire her and then hire her. I, I believe that's what I'm thinking. I mean, just logically, I, I could be wrong, but it sort of is out of sync towards just taking her position, which is a hired position, turning it into a, a board position technically. All right, without, first of all, talking to her about it, right? And without, like, taking into account that she's an employee at this point in time. In essence, you're getting rid of her position as an employee. You're, you may be calling it something different, but technically, I, I would think that would be up to the, the lawyer, the address, that I, I would, you know, the technicality of that. So I just wanted to bring it up.
Thank you, Mr. Stelter. Anyone else? Oh, Michelle.
Yep, I just, you're at nine thirty now. Um, I would suggest you go back to Mr. Weber's motion to table this, maybe talk to your attorney and bring it back at a future meeting.
All right, we need to have a motion to extend.
To extend the meeting another half hour.
Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Yes.
Um, I've been typically walking to meetings at nine thirty, uh, to destroy a quorum. And one reason I'm staying tonight is because I feel as a board, we've been disrespectful to a number of our citizens who came here for a specific agenda item and have been waiting since six thirty patiently to have that agenda item addressed, addressed, and have still have not addressed it. So I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, wait, we have a motion, I see. So we need to deal with the motion.
Deal with that one.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table that the finance officer of the town being treasurer is prescribed by CRS Title thirty-one. So we're ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, all in favor? Oh, Mr. Stelter.
We have advice from our attorney to wait for legal advice on this issue. And I think that since we've paid him for his advice, we gotta take it.
He is wanting to speak as well.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I was, I was hoping to reiterate my request from the, the prior motion, um, that, that we review the, the existing employment relationship and how that transition would occur, um, and any legal liability, um, that the town would be taking, uh, in, in adopting this.
Thank you. All right. Well, at this point, we can vote it up or vote it down. So all in favor?
Aye. Point of order, can we not table the motion?
Um. Aye.
You can.
Okay.
If it's on, yeah.
Yeah, both.
That's one of the, yeah, move, move to table the motion till the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I agree with what Dave Knudsen's saying, and I'd like to like to, uh, make a motion to table Resolution zero seven, twenty twenty-two.
All right, you have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. All right, now the next thing is the residential use classification.
I'm going to make a motion first.
Yes, thanks.
I'd like to move the, uh, agenda item that most of our citizens have shown up for tonight. Now be dealt with right now.
Okay.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion to deal with the, uh, two eleven and a half Niagara issue now versus waiting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right. All right, Ms. Ferguson, you sent us a report on, you looked at this issue and sent us a report on it. Is there anything that you would like to add to that report?
No, I, uh, I investigated the town's involvement and the process that we took and worked with, um, our representative, our town attorney representative, and, um, the information provided to the board and open for questions if there were any.
Any questions from the board, the town administrator?
Were town employees involved in, um, pushing her to pay?
From my investigation, the answer to that would be no.
Can I get a, I get another response with that, Mary?
I, I would, so, um, I will reiterate that the, um, town employee stated that the town would pay for it and homeowner expense we would go to, you know, the town would then speak with the homeowner about the cost. The, the information that I received was that the contractor spoke with the homeowner, the agreement was made. The homeowner accepted it.
Um, five hundred dollars an hour is extortion. I mean, that's, really it is. And I agree that generally, the town does not get bought, get involved in third party.
That's right.
Problems.
That's right.
I mean, we've got enough of our own. So, but in this case, there was town employees there also pushing. So now all of a sudden, we're culpable at some level just because of that.
Town attorney says that is inaccurate. So this was specific about the process that the town took, um, which is in the, um, this, this administrative memo that I provided. Um, again, uh, I'm happy to go over that very briefly if, if the board would like to hear it.
Just, uh, let the town administrator finish.
Um, thank you. Um, so the town, the wind event, of course, occurred on Friday and, um, the town staff went out throughout town and removed limbs, cleared, cleared streets, um, provided all of that, uh, process through the town. The town was not aware that there was a tree situation in the alley on Niagara until Sunday. We received a phone call from dispatch that went to the police department, was dispatched to the police department, that they would contact Public Works. I received a text message stating that there was a tree down and what, um, could pose a public safety risk. I talked to our Public Works Director and sent him, uh, out on site to, to look at it. Uh, the Public Works Director went in his personal vehicle, uh, with his wife to the scene to assess the situation, called and said, this is bigger than what the town staff can do. This is bigger than Public Works can do. Uh, this is an issue. What would you like me to do? He said, we need to contact a tree person, have them come out, tell us what it's going to cost and what it's going to take to get the situation cleared. Our Public Works Director called three individual tree contractors. One answered the call. The contractor came out, assessed the situation, stated, yes, uh, this is pretty dangerous. Yes, we were completely blocking the access to an alley that is the primary access for emergency services, um, and should be doubled. According to the people that were on site and some people that were, uh, witness to the situation, the, there was no discussion about a eight AM scheduled removal. Had there have been, the town would have closed off the access on each end of the alleyway. The town would have notified the homeowners and the town would have notified dispatch so that they could have appropriately rerouted emergency services until the tree was removed the next day. At that point, the town employee, Public Works Director stated, okay, this is the situation. We need to get this tree removed and said, we'll take care of it. There was a discussion that the town was not privileged to between the homeowner and the contractor. The homeowner signed and agreed to make the payment. The contractor moved forward in the appropriate fashion as far as gear and things. I've been provided images as well, but I forwarded to the board, um, along with the email correspondence that was received. Um, and Public Works left the scene. The tree was removed and that was the answer.
Did the homeowner already, um, acquire someone to remove the tree and was the work already in progress at the time?
No.
Jumped in?
No, the tree that was over the alley and blocking the alley, um, had no work had been done to that tree.
Did you hire Jack Farrell to do it?
Yes. Excuse me, we're not going to have a back report with the.
I have a back.
And the board wasn't aware. The board was not aware, or excuse me, the staff was not aware.
Was the alley approachable from both sides?
To the tree, but then it was blocked. You could not get through it. And from the information received through the investigation, fire trucks could not have gotten through. There is not enough room for a fire truck to do a U-turn in the empty field area and turn around and back out.
Yes, Mary?
So reading your memo and hearing everything, it feels like there is a weak link here. The police should have gone there and assessed the situation.
Agreed.
Because they are, they are a public safety, so why would dispatch call Public Works and not send a police officer?
That's what I'm saying. Dispatch contacted the police department. The police department contacted Public Works.
That's the weak link.
And that's already been addressed.
Well, and, and, I mean, addressed in a policy that if there's.
Absolutely.
What you, I, I guess I'm, what's your new policy?
So the policy is that anything that comes through dispatch that is deemed a potential public safety or has anything to do with traffic or blockage, that regardless of date or time or on duty, an officer will respond and assess the situation along with Public Works Director and anyone else that needs to be at home. As stated in this, um, I do believe that the town needs to have a clear policy and so a mechanism list of these are the steps that are taken, these are the contacts that are made, these are the questions that are asked, um, in a documented form will be utilized moving forward in any kind of emergency situation.
Yes.
Um, I don't think we need a policy. I think this is common sense. I, I believe, and I've stated this to a couple of people involved, I think that Mason Babcock was the right guy to call if there was somebody in the car under the tree. I think he's the guy you want. Uh, but that wasn't the, the situation, right? The situation was a tree was blocking an alley. I don't see how that could possibly be construed to be an emergency by anybody who's on site. That lacks common sense. I know, because I saw where it fell, seen the pictures, that it wasn't blocking access to residences other than two eleven and a half. I doubt that an ambulance would have any trouble getting to any spot on that alley, other than two eleven and a half. Regarding a fire truck, I think if a fire was happening, this guy probably could have cleaned it up for that truck to get through. He's on the fire department, right? Um, I think that what happened here, whether or not town is responsible, like partially, maybe, you know, certainly played a huge role, but there were enough people on site that it seems like someone should have had the common sense to realize that this was not an emergency, right? Sent Mason home, said, sorry for your troubles. It's going to be dealt with. And the fact that we've had all this discussion, all this grief around it is only destructive to the community.
Thanks.
Yeah.
If, if I may, since this is in direct response to an agenda item, which was my report to the board, I would, I would just state that I think that the piece that's different is that you're referring to it as an alley, but for the section of Niagara that you're talking about, that alley is the main access.
No.
It, and, and I would just, um, also, I, I'll stop at that point. I've given my report and information. And I know that members of ambulance, EMT, fire department, and everyone are represented here this evening and, and can provide their own input on the situation and their, and what they think as far as access.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
And the motion is that the town of Peonia pay Mary half of her bill.
Okay, is there a second? All right, that motion dies for lack of a second.
I'm going to be pay all of Mary's bill.
Okay, we have, is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
All right, through the discussion from the board?
Yeah, I was actually going to make a motion to pay all of it less what she was going to pay Jack Farrell to get it off the place. But I think we're coalescing on something here, so I'll go with you.
Yes.
Um, I think it's too early to make a decision on this vote for me until I hear from some of the people that are from emergency services. And I, I respect the investigation that was done. I think it was good information that came to us, but I'd like to hear more from the people.
Any other comments from the board?
I would just like to ask one more question. Since, uh, the police officer on duty made a really bad decision. And I hope that police officer has been identified, I mean, that, that decision has been identified. And that's where I feel like the town of Peonia is culpable for not, that officer not going out and establishing that there could have been cones put up and it could have been dealt with on Monday morning. But that's the piece that's missing here, because I think public safety would have had a different viewpoint to it. And that's why I voted seconded the town paying for it.
Okay.
And, uh, once upon a time, there was a public safety committee and two trustees would have shown up. Untrusted, unconvincing.
Yeah, so anything else from the board? All right, anything from the public? All right, let's start with you, ma'am. And three minutes is the limit.
Alicia of the last Niagara Avenue, I disagree with the board paying, thinking of it. Um, there was a lot of mistruths that were said, um, about the situation. I don't see why, if this, if you're going to pay for it, then I think it sets precedence that for the rest of the town, if you have a tree on your private property that falls and you need to pay for everybody that this happens to. Uh, she had free alcohol offered to her that she turned down. Free help, wouldn't it cost her nothing? I would like you, if you're going to consider it, talk to Jack Farrell, because I don't believe that he was there. I am her neighbor. If this Jack Farrell is the one that was going to come, I did hear him come Friday night and said he would be there in the morning. He was not there in the morning. So I think you really need to talk to him and see what happened with that situation, because there is not chainsaws going all day Saturday. And if you are going to pay this for her, then it sets a precedence for the town. That if somebody else has a tree fall and it's blocking something, then you got to pay it for them too. Because it was on private property. She knew the tree was dead. She had been advised to cut this down for some time.
Thank you. Yes, sir. And, yeah, and my.
Hi, I'm Blake Kinzer. I'm the fire chief of the town of Peonia. Yeah, my parents called me on Sunday, told me there was a tree down in the alley. I contacted Corinne. She, by text message, she told me that Public Works were on top of it. I didn't go to the site. The fire department was never dispatched to there. Had we been, we would have been in the same boat as the town. We're not near specialized for that kind of an issue. Having seen pictures of the tree, having grown up in that alley and on that street and having very intimate knowledge of my fire trucks, it would have been not very possible for emergency access at that point. The fire department never once deemed this to be an emergency, because we were never involved, okay? I got notified two weeks ago that my name got brought up in this meeting. By the time I got here, I was in Delta teaching. By the time I got. By the time I got here, I wasn't allowed to speak, otherwise I would have spoke then to the current or to the past board. You guys have been misfortunate hearing it now, sorry. I did go back and review the, the meeting. And first off and foremost, Mason is a member of our fire department. Mason is a lieutenant for me. Mason is responsible for all of our training, along with his other lieutenant and the oversight of our, our captain, myself. Mason is impeccable with his safety, Mason is impeccable with his character. What has gone on in the last two meetings is wrong, you guys have broken your own rules. There's been slander going on with Mason, one, by being called extortion. And two, the last meeting, there was a whole lot of slander being thrown around and it wasn't stopped by the board. I do believe that the board owes Mason an apology for that, for you guys breaking your own rules. And I hope it doesn't continue, but I trust my life to Mason, I saw the pictures, he was in full PTE, that was told that he wasn't. The man knows his business. Whenever we do Sawyer classes, Mason leads it. Whenever we have dangerous trees to cut down on fire calls, Mason is the one we turn to. All of us put our lives in Mason's hands.
So your time is up, but thank you, you wind up.
Sure, if I'm allowed, I do appreciate you guys talking to me. And I hope that Mason's reputation with his company is not hurt by everything that was allowed to be said. Thank you.
Yes.
Mary Riley. I don't, I have a a statement that I would like to read. Also, I have a, a report from the Peonia clerk about no call that was received from dispatch on the twenty fourth. Nor was there an incident report made. Also, I also have in here an email that was sent to Corinne Ferguson from Jack Farrell explaining the entire situation. How much he, what he was doing, how, how, how much we discussed. The limb, it wasn't a tree, the tree fell in my yard and on my car. A limb was at the edge of the alley. And in his email, he states very, very clearly that about the structure and, and how that limb was wedged. Also, that nothing could be done about that limb until I got my car cleared, because the tree was on my car. And that surrounding area was cleared up, which took us a great deal of time. So if you will bear with me, I want to give you these. The first is, is my statement that I'm going to read, the second is Jack's email.
One minute nineteen seconds.
Okay, and and the, and then there's a Peonia report in there from the police and then also Corinne's mail. So, I will bury with my statement. And it says, after reviewing Corinne Ferguson's administrative memo to the Board of Trustees regarding Niagara Avenue Alley Tree, I noticed two major discrepancies. First, Mrs. Ferguson states that severe winds knocked down tree limbs throughout Peonia on April twenty second and that my incident did not occur until Sunday, April thirtieth. In addition to April thirtieth being a Saturday and not a Sunday, the incident actually occurred Sunday, April twenty fourth. This was two days after the windstorm, not eight days later, as the memo incorrectly claims. As I pointed out during the previous trustee meeting, I had been dealing with my tree damage for two days. An administrative memo stating that this had been an issue for over a week is very misleading. Second, Mrs. Ferguson's memo states, upon notification from dispatch to the Peonia Police Department and notification.
Riley, your time is up.
I move to give her more time.
All in favor? Okay, I will give you another three minutes.
Okay, and notification near the same time to me from Blake, well, I'll read that again. Second, Mrs. Ferguson's memo states, upon notification from dispatch to the Peonia Police Department and notification near the same time to me from Lake Kinzer, I directed Corey Heinegger, Public Works Director, to go to the site and assess the situation. I was never contacted by a police officer during this incident, nor did I witness any officers on site. Afterwards, I kept wondering why. If this was deemed such an emergency situation, there were no law enforcement officers present. It was the Peonia Police Department had, if the Peonia Police Department had been contacted, as Miss Ferguson's memo states, certainly they would have to show up to make their own assessment and do whatever was necessary for public safety. Earlier today, I went to the Peonia Police Department to get more information, either a police report or more information on the nature of the dispatch call. And I was informed that there was no information. The police service tech gave me a printed report that you have that reads in part, I was unable to locate a report or a call from dispatch regarding this incident. So either there was an error in the police department's record keeping or an error in the administrative memo regarding an interaction with the police. Based on the timeline of the memo, there were at least two opportunities for the town administrator to contact law enforcement assessing the safety level of the situation. Is, is the job of the police placing the burden on our Public Works Director rather than on law enforcement created an unnecessary and scrupulous interaction for all involved. I explained in TQ what happened next. Even though I had already scheduled removal of the tree for the following day, I was made to feel that this had to be done, removed immediately by this person and at this price. I can't help but feel this entire incident would have gone much smoother if the town administrator would have contacted the proper authorities. I would like to be reimbursed for the fifteen hundred dollars I was told I had to pay to have my tree dealt with immediately. Minus the two hundred and twenty five removal fee I was quoted to have it removed the following day. This is a total amount of twelve hundred and seventy five dollars. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Black. All right, anything else from the board? Yes, Mr. Briner?
Sad, sad, sad. I agree that it was a travesty of a violation of the rules of this board, not only to, from, from both parties in that presentation, talking about each other. They're, they're it's, it's the problem I have with the, the hypocritical thing and the rules for the, for the meetings, that you can't engage in personal attacks or say anything bad or talk about a specific person. It's BS, it's commonly allowed, you can't applaud unless it's for a new trustee or something that the, the mayor approves of. That you, the sad truth is that the people have the right to say those things, whether it embarrasses them or what. But it's, it's, it's much at odds with the rules of the sport, because they are so spottily enforced. The, the thing that I see on this where it went bad was that someone decided that this needs to be dealt with now. And then it became a property owner's problem. This is days after the incident. It, it was missed by the town. The, even if a policeman had showed up and decided it had to be removed now, I questioned that there is a statute that would allow him to order the property owner to hire someone on the spot and do it now. If the something needs to be removed at the town's judgment, the town needs to get it done and then worry about who pays for it later. So yes, I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Everybody should. All right, we are at nine fifty seven, we need to extend the meeting or adjourn. Got a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a question on the table, though.
Oh, but we still have to do this.
I know.
We have a hand, it's like.
Well, we still have other people in the audience who wants to speak, sir.
Hello, my name is Mason Babcock. First and foremost, no one was forced to do anything. Mrs. Riley took the contract into the privacy of her home, reviewed it with her husband, read every word of it and signed it with me. I have a signature on the front of it, I have a signature on the back of it, okay? This is my business partner and wife, Sheena Babcock. We are two of this town's arborists, we own and operate Alexa Gray Tree Solutions. We live here in Peonia, where I volunteer over a thousand hours of my time every year to make sure this town has adequately trained and prepared fire department. When the pager sounds, I am one of the people that leads the men and women of the Peonia Fire Department into the darkness. The past two years, we've helped ensure that there is an Easter egg hunt at Volunteer Park. Alexa Gray Tree Solutions also does charity work for our less fortunate clients, when we can afford it and when we deem it necessary, if that client feels like discussing it with us. For those of you that aren't aware, the town called us to handle an emergency call recently on April twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. As they've said, it was deemed an emergency by dispatch and Corey Heinegger, which we performed professionally and ethically. A tree owned by Mr. Gregory Caulfield and Mrs. Mary Riley has snapped in half and the town called us to address it. We did address it. Then, during the last town meeting on April twenty eighth, the mayor and the town council allowed Mrs. Riley to stand at this podium for over twenty minutes, which she used to slander us and do irreparable damage to our reputation. If I am correct, typically citizens are only allowed three minutes to talk, not given a soapbox to stand on while they spew slanderous lies, all while damaging another citizen's reputation. If that weren't enough damage done, once Miss Riley finished, Mayor Bacharun thanked her for her courage. Mayor Bacharun, you validated every single lie Miss Riley told and in turn breathed life into the doubts any viewers of the meeting may have had about us because of her slander. Mrs. Riley was not courageous in her lies. Mrs. Riley was slanderous. And she lied about our company and our performance, which we can fully disprove in order to appeal to the town council and listeners of the town meeting. It's obviously worked, as she's looking at getting a full refund. In conclusion, regardless of how the town cleans up this mess they made with Miss Riley, we believe, and when I say we, I mean Alexa Gray Trees, we are owed a formal apology from the town of Peonia and we are owed a formal apology from Mayor Bacharun herself. If that is not within the town's ability, we will explore other options. We are good, hardworking and dedicated servants to our community, not the unprofessional, roughneck, abusive predators you allowed Miss Riley to paint us as. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is what?
Suzanne Watson. So I would like to reiterate the importance of following a process with our government. You know, we have a town administrator, we have trustees, we have processes that we follow. We're required to follow, follow processes through the laws of this country. We live in America, people are afforded due process in America. We don't live in Russia, we don't live in China, we don't live in Cuba. You cannot go, I mean, I, I think the town really is at fault here. As we see, there are very many different opinions, you know, there's a lot of emotion during this. People have different opinions, neighbors have different opinions, views of what happened. Everybody has a different way of looking at this. But what was missed here is this process that we follow. It allows us to step back, to give someone time to make a decision. You know, you have until tomorrow to make this decision. But to have town employees be present when someone is being compelled, I mean, you know, they, they have some, they have a presence, they have an amount of authority, authority. And just that pressure on someone who has gone through this like difficult event with this tree, you know, just their presence, in the presence of this, yeah, this is an emergency and you have to do something now, is enough to rob them of the processes. I mean, there's an obligation that the town has to follow the processes in place. You do not use your talent employees to stand near and behind and compel people to sign contracts. That being said, Corinne says in a report that she asked for a cost estimate. That's not what I'm hearing from the last commenter. He said he, he had an emergency call to address it. She does not say in a report she asked him to take the tree out, she just asked for a cost estimate. I'd kind of like to see this cost estimate that was given to the town. I'd like to see the written report that she's saying that she did, because this does, this deserves written reports. If something happened in my yard, by the way, this happened to me, why, if I had something, someone lined up to take out a tree, why in God's name would anybody submit to paying fifteen hundred dollars on the spot to have it taken out right now? There had to be some sort of a duress that this homeowner was under. And I'm not blaming the tree pruner, I'm blaming the lack of process on the part of the town. And that's why the town really needs to step in and figure out what to do here. You know, if it was really an emergency, the town could have footed the bill and then figured out how to pay for it, how to assess to them. Um, yeah, so anyway, there is a process in our tree ordinances about removing emergencies. And usually a homeowner is given some amount of time, even if it was twenty four hours, it would be helpful.
Thank you, all right, Ms. Patterson.
Thank you. So I have three things to say. First, I agree with Mr. Babcock that this is the town's mess to clean up. I disagree, however, that what members of the public say are the board's responsibility, because the board legally cannot restrict the content of public speech during a meeting. So in that way, the board is not responsible for what the public has to say, only what the board has to say. I would like to bring the focus back to what the board's responsibility and the town's responsibility is here. The board cannot make a decision on whether this tree was a risk, that is for the experts to determine. What the board has to decide in this is whether the town took appropriate action. I think the investigation into this was made by someone who was directly involved in the process, your town administrator. And that to me is a clear conflict of interest, and I think the town should revisit how you are going to review and evaluate this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson, all right, anyone else? All right, anything else from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to amend the motion so that the amount paid, this amount she's asking for, which is twelve hundred and seventy five dollars.
All right, is there a second on that? I'll second it. All right, any further discussion from the board on that? All right, all in favor of amending the motion to make it twelve hundred and seventy five dollars?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. All right, so back to the main motion, we have a motion that the town of Peonia pay twelve hundred and seventy five dollars to this director. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Nay.
All right, that motion passes. All right, moving on, our next item of the agenda will then be the residual use classification and review procedures. We have a motion on the table to adjourn the meeting. Well, we have a motion.
Oh, I can't, can I?
Well, it hasn't been seconded. I know, it's just my feeling is that decisions made late at night are poor.
Yes.
It's just really obvious, we can pick this up.
So, we just made it sweet, spent twelve hundred and seventy five dollars. Are you saying that that was not a good decision?
Point out a lot of not good decisions, I made it myself.
That's why I voted nay, because it was not, it was late at night. There isn't due deliberation, we've heard a lot of new information. We haven't had due deliberation.
I chased this down in my own satisfaction. My feeling is, I wouldn't have done it except five hundred dollars an hour is unconscious.
Okay, well, we're way off of the. All right, all in favor of adjourned?
No, this is a vote, so you have to take public comment.
Actually, I don't, a motion to adjourn doesn't have discussion.
It doesn't have discussion, all right. It doesn't have discussion, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are out of here, thank you, everyone.